Thank you very much and welcome everyone to our town council meeting of Tuesday, September 28. Glad that so many of you can join us. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and just a little bit of housekeeping for my council colleagues. As you all know, we spent some considerable amount of time responding to Oprah requests. And while I didn't think it appropriate for us to interrupt each other when we have questions throughout the meeting, I'm going to ask that we do so as opposed to sending any text messages. Please, if you have a question for clarity or something you didn't hear, just please raise your hand and I will recognize you. Thank you very much. And so we now have on our consent agenda, it is National Preparedness Month, and we are going to ask Abdur Yasin, if you can please raise your hand so that Madam Moderator can bring you over as a panelist, as well as Caligera McCormick. And if Ken Steele is on as well, can you please raise your hand so that we can bring you on as panelists?
Okay, thank you. Yes, you're going to be promoted to a panelist, as Madam President said. Your computer is just going to switch over. You're just going to hit the prompt on your screen to let that happen. And you're going to start your video and your microphone when you do so. I don't see Mr. Steele on here. Oh, yes, I have Jason Steele, is that?
I got the sun.
Okay. But the hand wasn't raised, so I'm not sure if that's what we want to bring over.
If Jason Steele is actually Ken Steele, can you please raise your hand?
I don't.
He did not raise his hand.
Okay, Captain Yasin, do you know if?
Thank you. Thank you for having us this evening. Jason Steele is Ken Steele's son.
And he's in Colorado.
Yes.
Okay, beautiful.
Is Ken joining us?
He should be. I sent him a link earlier.
Ken, if you're on, can you raise your hand?
Oh, he's just listed under Ken, that was why. And Ken, if you're just gonna, your screen is going to change? And there we go. There's one, and Ken should be coming over. It's a lot of new prompts. Zoom put up a lot of new security, so it's no longer just instant. You have to push a lot of different. And Ken, if you can follow the prompt on your screen to start your video and your microphone. There we go. And then if you can just unmute yourself as well, Mr. Steele? Unfortunately, I'm not able to do that for you. It's the bottom left-hand side with the microphone. Okay.
Okay, there I am.
Wonderful. Welcome, everyone. I am giving the floor now to Captain Abdur Yasin.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you, Council President Mathieu Brown, and Council members Castellino, McCartney, Williams, and Rutherford. Thank you, Mayor Perici, members of the administration. It's a wonderful opportunity to speak for you this evening. Again, my name is Fire Captain Abdur Yasin. I'm one of several deputy coordinators for our local Office of Emergency Management. I want to take the time to acknowledge that we are still dealing with COVID-19 pandemic, and more recently, some of our residents and businesses have had to contend with the devastation caused by Hurricane Ida. The township and its leaders and workforce have been very responsive to dealing with the enormity of both the pandemic and the recent disaster. They've done so admirably. Just as a point of information, the county is still offering testing and vaccines daily at the Kmart Shopping Plaza. Booster shops for immunocompromised are underway for scheduling either testing or vaccines. Folks should do so online at essexcovid.org, or contact Essex Covid, the Essex Covid Call Center at 973-777-8456. Also, as a reminder, at the same location at the Kmart Plaza, FEMA has opened up the Disaster Recovery Center for residents and businesses impacted by Hurricane Ida seeking assistance. Those hours are Monday to Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Applicants really need to file as soon as possible. So switching gears, my primary function as a deputy OAM coordinator is to serve as the liaison to the West Orange Community Emergency Response Team, AKA West Orange CERT. You've probably seen them at plenty of events over the years. We have on the green shirts, and they're always on hand to help out. So this program has been established since the 90s from FEMA, and CERTs provide volunteer opportunities for residents and community partners to assist with phases of emergency management, which are preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. West Orange CERT, however, is not a replacement for uniform personnel, but more so a force multiplier with the task of augmenting the reach of responders as they handle emergencies. So we're moving into the next chapter of CERT. We recently had a change in leadership of the team. So in September, every two years, leaders of the CERT team are elected, which this actually took place last week. So we now have a new director, new CERT director, Caligra McCormick. She's going to be introduced in a few moments. But and while I, with no question, I wish her success, and she's already hit the ground running since taking the helm. Her predecessor, who is joined with us this evening, Kenneth Steele, recently retired from the team after serving many years, including prior to my own involvement with the team, which started in 2013. So, Council President, if you wouldn't mind indulging me for a moment, I think we all owe a debt of gratitude to Ken for his sacrifice, his dedication, hard work, and simply the passion he really put into this team to keep us striving. We did take time.
Excuse me. Sorry. I have a proclamation to read also that the mayor presented back in June.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you, Councilwoman. So I just want to say, and at that event, we had to send off for him where, you know, the team and his loved ones were there. But again, you know, we just, I feel it's, you know, it would be a wonderful duty and honor that we distinguish, that we recognize as distinguished service publicly. So, you know, first off, on behalf of the Office of Emergency Management, you know, thank you very much, my friend, for all your years of service, you know, for your friendship. And, you know, just, you know, leading this team, you know, again, this is during the times that, you know, the town is really, you know, on its knees. There's been hurricanes, there's been obviously flooding recently. We've had the pandemic, cars stranded on 280, you name it, shelters for displaced residents. I mean, you've been at the helm of this team for a very long time, and we really thank you for all your service, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Yasin, and I want to take a moment, a personal privilege, to also thank you, Ken, for all of your volunteerism, your heroism. And I say heroism because, you know, you've had some recovery, in physical recovery, to contend with, and it's been incredibly challenging. When I visited you, and then just several months later, you were back out and wearing your shirt, and you're with us for our drive-by Christmas. I am just very, very impressed by your courage, your strength, your commitment, and your dedication to our township, and I am very grateful to have had the opportunity to be able to join you. I will also remind everyone of Snowmageddon. I was really impressed that CERT was out there. So I just want to say, you are missed, you will be missed, Ken. Thank you so much for all of your commitment to our residents and our township. And if my council colleagues, before Councilwoman McCartney reads the proclamation, I see Councilwoman Castellino's hand up. Please.
Thank you, Council President. Ken, you will be missed. You became such a good friend, getting to know you, for advocating for your CERT team. There was never a moment gone by where if you needed something for your team or you thought the residents needed something, you were not shy. You would call and advocate. And you're one of the best advocates in the township. As Cindy, the Council President, just mentioned in regards to, yeah, you had some illness that you recovered from, and you were out there not long after you left the hospital, and here you are, you know, down at the food pantry, overseeing, make sure all went well with the food drive. So it just says so much to the person who you are, and thank you also to your lovely wife, because she's been by your side and a good advocate as well and support. So we're going to miss you, but you won't be far, so we'll be looking to catch you now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand just went up.
Thank you, Council President. I think one of the better aspects of this role is that we get to highlight the unsung heroes and make sure that they are sung. I've been a resident for 20 years, and while your name is not the first name that comes up during, you know, catastrophes or disasters, I know that you've been working diligently in that area. So I say personally, for me and my family, thank you for your service thus far. I hope you get a chance to take a victory lap and smell your flowers now, while people are here and acknowledging all that you've already done for the township. So thank you on behalf of the Rutherford's. That's it, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, I certainly echo in my colleagues' accolades to your service, Mr. Steele. I remember as Chairwoman of the Human Relations Commission, whenever we had an outdoor activity, you would always reach out and ask if, how we could utilize your services, what support you could provide. And certainly during that terrible winter storm, I saw you out on Northfield Avenue directing traffic in that blizzard. So for that alone, your service is to be commended. So just thank you again for what you have done to this community. You absolutely will be missed, but we salute you and what you have done thus far. And certainly, we don't expect for you to just go away. We just expect for your service to change in some capacity. You cannot retire, because what would you do? You love this community so, and we anticipate and expect to see you around town as we have in the past. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Interesting that Councilwoman Williams just mentioned the HRC, because I see here in this proclamation that Ken did serve on the West Orange Human Relations Commission, 1997, co-chair, 1998 chair. So he has always been part of the community. The proclamation was in recognition of Ken's dedication to the township and presented to Ken on June 27, 2021, over the summer, where the mayor designated June 27th as Kenneth Roger Steele Day throughout the township. And it reads, "Ken Steele retired after 12 years as Director of West Orange CERT, and he and his wife Sharon are leaving West Orange for a new community." Ken was born in the Bronx, New York, in 1944. He and his family moved to West Orange, purchased a home on Birchwood Terrace, attended Pleasantale Elementary School, now we know as Kelly, Lincoln Junior High, and West Orange Mountain High School. After high school, he attended Fairleigh Dickinson and Rutgers University, where he majored in business psychology. Whereas, he joined the United States Army Reserve, Orwell One Chemical Company, Sergeant First Class, Platoon Sergeant. Medic, after six months of Army Reserve, Ken joined his dad, where they owned Steel's Gold and Porcelain Studio, became a certified dental ceramist, constructed dental prosthetics, and developed a customer relations sales force. And whereas, Ken met Sharon, also from West Orange, in 1973. They were fixed up on a blind date. Dated for a very short time, and were married only four months after dating. Lived in the West Mill Apartments from marriage, and after moving to a much larger apartment, continued to live until they moved to Springfield earlier this year. They raised one son, Jason, who married Michelle Lawrence, and they blessed Ken and Sharon with two grandchildren, Allison and Jacob. Ken has a long resume of service to the community. Deputy Director of Emergency Management for West Orange, Organized West Orange Police Auxiliary, Member of the Inner Circle for Senator Macklin Goldman, Advisory Board Member for Senator Pat Dodd, Essex County Constable, Commissioner on the West Orange Human Relations Commission, 1997, Co-Chair, 1998 Chair, West Orange Cultural Fair, and elected to the West Orange County Committee District 414. Ken helped provide the spark to restart the dormant program, and then was the engine that built membership from under 10 to over 30 volunteers. His dedication to CERT has been regularly recognized and honored, but there would not be a CERT program in West Orange, much less be as visible or successful without Ken's team leadership. And Ken, on behalf of my council colleagues, we thank you for your years of service, and we are glad you're here to welcome the new director as well, and we wish you and Sharon the very best. I'm sure you've already hit the ground running in Springfield.
And the floor is yours.
It was very easy to get involved in CERT in West Orange, because the township has nothing but wonderful people. And I was just thrilled being involved with them.
Outstanding leadership.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And also with us, Abdur, Captain, I'm sorry, Yasin.
Yes, yes. So as I mentioned earlier, you know, we had elections for our leadership for the West Orange CERT. So I'd like all of us to please welcome Caligra McCormick. She's our new CERT Director. Caligra, are you there?
She's on. No, she is unmuted, but I'm not able to hear her.
Yeah. Check your audio.
Do you have maybe earphones or anything that you're able to use? Or you may have to dial in?
Or check your audio setting?
Yeah. Miss McCormick, can you check your audio settings down by the microphone to click the little carrot and click Audio Settings to make sure that your laptop or computer is set with a microphone? Or if you're able to call in, we can sync your audio.
Well, Caligra's working on that, so she doesn't feel the pressure. I just wanted to say that I served with her at the Stop for Nikhil Race last Sunday. And talk about leadership. She is starting a West Orange High School CERT team, and the response was?
Ah, yes. Yes, thank you.
So we have two pages of high school students that signed up for CERT.
Hi, Caligra, welcome.
Thank you. Sorry about the technical snafu.
Not at all.
Thanks. Susan, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Not at all. I was talking about the West Orange High School and the work that we were doing at the Stop for Nikhil Race.
Okay, thank you. May I share my screen as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Let me know if you can see that.
Yep, you're all good.
Okay, great. So thanks, Abdur, and Ken. You showed me so much of what CERT was for the past several years. So thank you very much for all the guidance and for helping me understand what CERT is for the community and what we have done and what we can do. And I'm definitely going to miss you within West Orange, but I'm glad that we still keep in touch and we can continue to work together. So I'd like to introduce the new team that was elected about a week ago. So if you look to the left there, I am the Director. Matt Dragon is the Deputy Director. We currently have four team leaders, Lucian Wondolowski, Ben Jacobovic, Sheila Kaufman, and Ezraal Gross. We do have room for a few other team leaders in the organization as well, and those can rise up within the group. The effective term is two years for this group. So everyone here is familiar with CERT, but just a brief overview of what we do. We are a civic organization that provides support to first responders. As Abdur said, we're not a replacement for the uniforms, but we can be a multiplier force for them. We organize other volunteers in the event of a disaster. Our team is trained in first aid, CPR, family disaster-ness, preparedness. We'll go over later about how to create a family communication plan. That's one of the best things that you can do to prepare yourself and your family and your neighbors before any kind of disaster occurs. And there are a number of other things that we are trained in as well. And we work with the police, fire, first aid, and the Office of Emergency Management at various levels. So the different ways that you can reach out and contact us, there's our email address, I'm sorry, our website, The Twitter, our handle's @WestOrangeCERT. And Facebook, it's @WestOrangeNJCERT, because there are other West Oranges in the country. So we, as Susan was mentioning, sometimes we do get volunteers when we are at different events within the community that are interested. We'll share with them what our mission is and the different ways that we can support the community. In addition, you can also reach out and volunteer through the methods mentioned here on the bottom of the slide. Just an example of some of the things that we've done over the past, just this past year, community events, whether it's the cooling stations, the charging stations in the event of power loss to a number of our communities, the water distribution. Down below, this was the Nikhil Run a few days ago, and we'll be supporting the mayor's run as well as the run for ZAC in the coming weeks. And there are a variety of food distribution programs that our volunteers have helped support as well over the past year. This is the Thanksgiving Preparedness Distribution at the pantry. There's also, I want to, there are a number of volunteers who helped with the COVID food meal distributions, and that was on a daily basis. Last year, there were about 12 people who rotated in different shifts, who volunteered for those deliveries, and that was really a lifeline to those folks. With Laura Van Dyke and Dorothy Sanders, we've just begun supporting the seniors as well. Last week, with Tony's Kitchen, they prepare frozen meals and a bag of staples, so dry goods and other food for the recipients. Those we deliver once a week to a list, and it's already begun to grow from last week to this week. And we're helping to establish that program within the town. And then a shout out to the dozen or so volunteers who helped with the vaccine clinics this year, whether it was at Washington School, or at Edison, or at Bethany Church. There were a number of different vaccine clinics that people helped with. So thank you very much to those volunteers. So turning to National Preparedness Month, there are, there are many more ways to prepare, but here are the 12 ways as highlighted by FEMA. So we're not going to go through all of these, but these are signing up for alerts and warnings. This is real easy nowadays, that you'll get the, you'll get the alerts to your phone. Good for your, you know, your kids or other family members as well, because they will know what's, you know, which highway may be closed or what other things they may not be able to drive to. Need to make a plan. This is what we're going to talk about in just a moment, about the communication plan. And there, you can see on the rest of the slide, the other ways to prepare. Saving for, you know, always spend, save, and share. So if you have something that you can save, it'll be there when you need it, because you're never going to know when a disaster may happen. And practice emergency drills. It's great to have a place to meet when there's an emergency, but unless you, everybody's familiar with where that is and how to get there and knows that that's the place to meet without even thinking about it. So it's second nature. So practice those drills. And practice, you know, the multiple ways that you can get out of your house if one way is blocked. Is there, can you access the other way? Do you keep that other door blocked? It's very important that you have multiple ways to get in and out. Test your communication plan. We can draw one up, but once again, does it, it's not going to work unless you know what's in it. Keep your valuables safe, and plan with your neighbors, because if they, you might be the lifeline for them. So make sure that you're not just taking care of the ones in your household, but also the ones in your community. Make your home safer. That's a personal one, depending on what type of home you have or what ages are in it, but just know your evacuation routes. That's important if you're, if there's, you need to know multiple ways to get to and from the major points, because if there is, for example, a flood that typically happens when you turn left out your main street, do you know how to get to your meeting place if you turn right? Assemble and update your supplies. Everyone should have a dough bag ready for their household, and in it, there should be what you need for two or three days. And just make sure you periodically check that bag. Are your batteries fresh? Is there, you know, are the staple foods in there expired, that type of thing? Get involved with your community. So the more you know about your community and the more you can reach out and touch others and help others more readily. And the last one is sometimes overlooked, to document what's in your home and ensure it, because you don't want to be in the position where you are needing to identify for your, you want that reimbursement back for what's in your home, but you don't remember what you bought or when you bought it. So just some tips that everyone can use. And we're not going to go through the communication plan in depth. There's a website here that has a good example. If the www.reddy.gov, it has a lot of different templates that you can use. But essentially, for a communication plan, you should know, print this out. print this out, you can easily get it kind of double sided. You can also fill this out electronically and put it on your, you know, you can put it on your parents' phones, you can put it on your children's phones, depending on what your family dynamic is. What's your household information? How can people contact you? How can people contact others in your household? You might have all that information about your school and your child, that childcare stored in your phone, but if your phone doesn't have any charge and you need to contact them, it's great to have that also written down. Or you might not also remember that, those details when you're in that state of, you know, in that state of panic. So it's good to have it readily available. And there's other things that you can include in your communication plan that are specific to your family. Who's your veterinarian? What is the plan for, for your pet in the event of a disaster? Who, who is going to pick up and or carry them to where, where it is that you're meeting? You should also put your, all your, your health and dental insurance on here as well so you can have it readily available in the event that you've left your, your home or whatever location you're at without your wallet. But just some general information that, that anyone of any age can use. And we've also printed these up in a, you know, a nice double sided format. And for example, at the, at the Love and Unity Fest last weekend, someone came by the table and asked, oh, can I have 50 of those? We're having a block party. By all means, share them with your neighbors. This way you can keep not just yourself safe, but you can, you can help ensure that the community stays safe too. So thanks for letting us, for inviting certain and letting us share.
Allegra, thank you so very much. It's of no surprise to me that you were elected to lead the CERT team. Every time we've had an event, you are first, foremost present and always looking to assist everyone who is there, including those of us who organize events sometimes. Thank you so much. I'm very excited for your opportunity to lead CERT and look forward to joining you in other events. Thank you very much for that presentation as well, and congratulations on your election. I'm excited. I'm, I'm excited to see that Matt Dragon is also your deputy chief. You've got a great team. So very excited for the future of CERT. That was a great presentation. And is that going to be available on your Facebook? Is there a way you can share a link if it's possible? Just so, yeah. Yeah, great. I think that that's a good way to have it present because there's a lot of useful information, things that we're not thinking about in preparedness, but that is great if you can share it. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Fire Captain Yassine, thank you for bringing your team along and, and for your dedication to being the liaison for CERT. And looking at the time, it is now 7:10. I have to open the public portion of our meeting. So thank you all once again and look forward to seeing you in and around town.
And I'm just going to send you guys back to the attendee pool. So you don't have to change anything on your computer. I'll take care of that for you. Thanks.
Stay safe.
And to my council colleagues, if you will indulge me in holding off on council liaison until later in the agenda under new business, I'd really appreciate it. I know it is 7:10 now. And I'm sure that there are members of the public who would like to get to public comment. If there's no objections, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Metu Brown?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Moderator, are we ready for public comments?
Yeah, as you can see, I'm having a little ghost in my machine.
I paused to ask first before I invite the public to speak.
What a, what a, what a day.
Technology does not fail us until it does.
Correct. I'm just going to restart my, my keynote there. I'm going to try that. If not, I just grab it off of a different screen. Okay. Let me see if I can just grab it off of the normal screen rather than my keynote. This is just going to take me a moment just to bring up the timer.
That's okay. Members of the public can hear that we are having a little bit of technical difficulties and so grateful for their patience while you work through the case.
Yes, thank you. Okay, let's see if this one will work. Okay. It's okay, I'm going to do it from this computer. You know, I have to say, this has never happened before. And I apologize.
That's okay, no need to apologize.
I'm going to try it from my main computer, hopefully. Can you guys see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so this is, it'll just be a giant five minute timer instead of Okay, so thank you, thank you for your patience, everybody. I, this is the time for public comment. And if we can just have you use the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen. And I will prompt you at that time. And it's just going to take me just a little second because I have to do it a little different since I'm on this computer. Okay, first we have Mr. Joe Fagan. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and a good evening to you, Madam President, and your council colleagues and all members of the administration in attendance. I'm, of course, Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer. And thank you for the opportunity once again to briefly address the West Orange public this evening. I would like to remind residents that although Town Hall remains closed to the public due to COVID, there is no suspension of any township services. All departments are fully staffed and can be reached by phone or email. Serving the community and being responsive to the public's need will always be a priority even during a worldwide pandemic. Any interaction or exchange of documents can easily be achieved by using the two drop boxes. They are routinely, routinely tended to several times a day and as needed for special circumstances. One is by the rear of the building for envelopes, and one is located inside the front main lobby for larger documents. If any special instructions or urgent action is needed, communicating with the appropriate department should accommodate any situation. The reopening of Town Hall is constantly under consideration, but so is the safety of both residents and employees regarding the spread of COVID. The doors of Town Hall will reopen to the public at the right time when the risk of spread can be further marginalized by our ongoing preventative measures. The public's continued understanding and cooperation is greatly appreciated as we all strive to constantly make West Orange a great community to live and work in and raise a family. Speaking of Town Hall, we will be having two flag raisings coming up outdoors on the front steps, both celebrating ethnic pride and our rich cultural roots. The first one is to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month sponsored by the West Orange Hispanic Foundation on October 1st at 5:00 PM. The next week, there will be an Italian flag raising sponsored by Unico on October 7th, also at 5:00 PM. As we are moving into fall, the DPW will soon be focusing on leaf collection, which will begin on November 1st and last through mid-December. I know I'm getting ahead of myself here as many of us are still trying to squeeze every last drop at a summer. I will be providing further details and reminders as we get closer. However, all the information already has been posted to our website along with other announcements highlighting upcoming events in both October and November. Finally, I would like to extend my sincere heartfelt best wishes to Councilwoman Williams and her husband John, who on this day celebrate the occasion of their wedding anniversary. Thank you, Madam President, and have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have, a little bit different on this. We have Sally Malanga. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road. On behalf of our Green West Orange members, we applaud the agenda item where the 94 acres at Crestmont Country Club is up for preservation. You did it smoothly and swiftly. That neighborhood can now feel secure that that forest will be there to protect them from flooding. But the Mount Pleasant Forest came before the Open Space Commission in 2019. The mayor stated on Earth Hour in April of this year that he was preserving this forest too. That promise needs to be fulfilled. Mount Pleasant Corridor deserves the same protections from flooding and landslides by preserving this last shred of forest on the east side. The last couple of weeks in the early evening, I'd like to share with you, I have heard the low trill of a screech owl. It's very beautiful. They require the tall old trees that still exist in that place because no one has touched that forest in 100 years. The Open Space Trust Fund is $300,000 annually in perpetuity. We have the money to do this for our future security. This is the last piece of unprotected forest in West Orange. Our Green West Orange members, residents of the neighborhood who voted to use their tax dollars for open space would like to see this forest and ridgeline preserved. I'm asking you again tonight to please take action on this for all of us, and thank you for your help.
Thank you. Next, we have Joe Kerkovyak. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Joe Kerkovyak, Grandview Avenue. Resolution 258-21, the settlement agreement to end the prison litigation. If, as the agreement says, it's still subject to further revision, why is the council asked to vote now? The mayor said at the last council meeting, the prison paid 12 and a half million dollars for these properties starting in 2006 and, quote, "So we're basically buying them back at the value they paid for them," end quote. Public records for several of the prison parcels referenced a 2007 multi-parcel transaction valued at $14.65 million. Title search documents show Prism's 2007 purchase of the Barton Press property at 55 Lakeside for $11.75 million with an outstanding mortgage balance of $5.56 million. While I was on the council, I informed my colleagues in the administration of the foreclosure proceedings against Prism for both the CVS property at 217 Main and the Barton Press property for not paying mortgages or taxes for years. Barton Press foreclosure in 2012 resulted in the lender taking title to the property from Prism, then Prism brought it, bought it back at the foreclosure auction for a small fraction of the value of the property. What were those amounts and how did they figure in the mayor's calculation? Does the council have the mayor's accounting of his calculation or even the appraisals of the properties? At the last meeting, there was much talk about transparency and how because of the litigation, you weren't certain that you could say what you could say, but that you wanted to be transparent. Now that council members have already expressed their full support of the settlement agreement and price, will one of you make the previously referenced appraisals publicly available? Provision F of the Township Obligations on Page 7 of the agreement says the township will pay $383,000 to release the restrictive covenant. Why so much money for basically pushing paperwork? Especially after the mutual obligation section C says each party is responsible for their costs related to the agreement. Provision K, page 7, what is the status of moving public works and the animal shelter? The agreement references Exhibits A and B, but they are not on the township website agenda. Council members seen these exhibits, and why can't the public? So now that we know we're paying roughly 50% more than the market values of the prison properties, that's more than $4 million more. What makes anyone on the council think the new redeveloper is going to also overpay to buy them from us? If they don't overpay, won't we take a bath? Now that you're going to buy the prison properties, when are you planning to buy the other 18 properties listed for purchase? Including the two township-owned properties on the list. Best values of those properties are $6.8 million. Is that about how much you figure we'll pay? And where do you plan to get the funds to do that? My calculations are that we'll lose about $357,000 in annual property taxes when we buy the prison properties and a total of about $560,000 in annual property taxes from all of the properties. Are those calculations correct? Am I also correct that property owners will make up that lost revenue with higher taxes? You may recall that I asked you to review an email and answer a few questions at the last meeting. No one did, so here's a couple of them. Why does the township list two properties that already owns on the purchase list? And what is the status of Prism's contractual obligation to build affordable housing acquired, required in phase one? The council majority allowed Prism to move to phase two. It seems to me the township has a huge potential multimillion dollar claim against Prism and its partners for getting the benefit of building market rate units in phase one without having to pay for affordable housing. What redeveloper in phase two is going to build this affordable housing when they won't also get the benefit of building market rate units? Many market rate units it does build will also incur its own affordable housing obligation. I've been talking about municipal debt at past meetings and asking for transparency on the supplemental debt statements required to update our debt every time you borrow. I finally filed an OPA request. Our latest form shows that issued an authorized debt of $128.8 million. Less than three years ago at the start of 2019, that amount was just under $80 million. That's up nearly $49 million or 61% in less than three years. Are any of you concerned about this huge jump? And if so, what do you plan to do about it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Susan Lenzik. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Susan Lenzik, 234 Eagle Rock Avenue. I am echoing the comments by Sally Malanga. Extreme weather events are no longer anomalies, but they're common occurrences. There have been a number of landslides in this township recently, and they should get our attention. Contributions to landslides and flooding include developed areas which have non-porous surfaces. Contributions to landslides and flooding include developed areas which have non-porous surfaces. This exacerbates any runoff in an area. The Mount Pleasant Forest on Mount Pleasant Avenue is a giant sponge that absorbs millions of gallons of rainwater. Its preservation is essential to the safety of vehicles driving on the roadway as well as to the many properties that are down gradients of it. Any development of any part of it would create more non-porous surface area from which rainwater and snow melt will runoff. The sloped area would reach a saturation point sooner and would create another source of runoff to add to the current runoff on the road. This council has recognized that the preservation of the forested area at Crestmont Country Club is essential to protect the lives and properties on the steep slope east of the country club in the Pleasant Valley area, and we are grateful for that. Please recognize that the preservation of the Mount Pleasant Forest would also protect the lives and properties of travelers and residents on the steep slope east of the forest in the Mount Pleasant area. I stated this in a past meeting, but it bears repeating. The forest is part of the common wealth of this township. It is a treasure that ought to be held in common by all the citizens in West Orange. Please take the steps to purchase this forest for the health and safety of the residents of West Orange. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, I'm, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone else who would like to speak for public comment. Now is the time to raise your hand. You do not need to wait for someone else to finish speaking before you raise your hand. You will be put right in the queue. So Joyce Ruden, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please, and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, council members, and happy anniversary Tammy Williams and your husband. Um, Joyce, it's 38 Woodland Avenue in West Orange. Um, I would just like to um, echo the sentiments of earlier speakers in regard to the forest. Um, this week, the First Lady Tammy Williams put, wrote an article um, that was published in the Star Ledger, which says that our climate change in act, inaction in New Jersey is the greatest danger. And I really do believe that inaction on saving this forest is an impending danger for our township. The forest is literally our green infrastructure. To destroy this forest or allow it to be destroyed for, by developers will just wreck havoc on our township and all of the residents who live in the apartments below this forest and all along the street on Mount Pleasant. I urge you to go forth with um, the um, already um, previously um, stated desires to acquire this forest and to move forward and to acquire this forest. And thank you for saving Crestmont. Our Green West Orange was also very active on that issue and we're so grateful that, that, that forest is now going to be preserved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And one last time for public comment using the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen, and if you are one of our call-in patrons, it is star nine. I realize I didn't mention that because the normal screen is not up. Okay, so with that, Mr. Puglisi, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Uh, good evening, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Uh, I just want to share as always some upcoming events uh, that are happening throughout the county. Uh, this Saturday, October 2nd, from 8:30 to 4:00 is our Household Hazardous Waste um, Collection Day at the Public Works Yard at 99 Bradford Avenue in Cedar Grove. Uh, two weeks from Saturday, October 16th, from 9:00 to 1:00. Uh, same location is the Computer and Electronics Recycling Day. Um, on October 23rd, at 9:00 AM is our first Strut Your Mutt Parade um, at Brookdale Park. And so the second event that day at 1:00 PM is the second Strut Your Mutt Parade in Grover Cleveland Park. Um, October 24th, which is a Sunday, at 10:30 AM, uh, we have our third and final uh, K-9 Parade in Branchbrook Park. Uh, then on October 31st, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM is our trick-or-treating event at Turtleback Zoo, which is Howell Owen. Um, it was mentioned earlier in the meeting, uh, FEMA has set up an office at Kmart. No appointments are necessary. We urge residents who were affected by Hurricane Ida. Uh, if they do have questions or they want to contact FEMA to go there as soon as possible and get their um, applications in as quickly as possible. Um, we have also reopened our Sears vaccination and testing location. Um, and uh, we are offering, as was mentioned, um, third doses for uh, people with immunocompromised uh, systems. Uh, appointments are needed. I just want to correct the phone number for the call center. It's 973-877-8456. Um, and then as always, the website is essexcovid.org. Uh, all this information is on our website, which is essexcountynj.org. And I thank you for the opportunity to present this to you.
Madam President, um, as Mr. Puglisi was talking, we did have another resident raise their hand. Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Puglisi. Um, it's listed under DT. If you can.
Hi, everyone.
Hi. Just if you can say your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Darren Tobia, and I live on Columbia Street. Um, the consequence of extreme weather events is no longer theoretical. We now know that our township is prone to flooding and landslides, and I just want to encourage uh, the council um, to please buy uh, whatever um, forests are available upon uh, steep slopes. Most notably is the Mount Pleasant Forest. And also to consider uh, adhering to sleep, uh, steep slope ordinances in the future. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you. And with that, um, no more hands are raised. Thank you.
Thank you uh, very much to the members of the public who shared their public comment. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, and I will um, I was trying to, to organize my notes that I took quickly. Um, Mr. Fagan, thank you so much for reminding the public that Town Hall is in fact open. It is not open to the public, but our, our municipal employees have been in the building working for quite some time now. Um, and the mayor did put a very detailed um, explanation uh, in his, on his social media page with respect to the reasons why um, Town Hall is not yet open. We do have these discussions just as follow-ups with the administration in order to assess when we can go back. And I am, I am comfortable to say that, you know, if we, if we're looking at the numbers that are increasing, um, that is a concern, and I think that this forum uh, provides safety for all of us as well as access for all of you. So with respect to um, Town Hall not being open, I'm sure we will open as soon as it is safe to do so. Um, Ms. Malanga, thank you for your comments with respect to the preservation of Crestmont. I do um, understand that the mayor uh, agreed to purchase the Mount Pleasant Forest. Um, the difference between the Mount Pleasant Forest and Crestmont is that Crestmont did have a purchaser that was going to develop that um, area. We have not seen that in um, the Mount Pleasant Forests and, and I'm sure the next question is, are you going to wait until it happens? Um, no, I did advocate, you know, initially to purchase that, and the mayor did say no one is interested in buying that property because it's not developable because of the steep slope. Um, I did push back on that at that time. That was almost three years ago now. And to this date, there has been no one interested in purchasing that property. And so my concern is one of preservation. Um, however, also the fact that there is no interest and taking yet another 12 acres off of the tax rolls is a concern. So at this time, I am not prepared to move forward on the purchase. If my council colleagues would like to have that discussion at some time, I'm happy to engage it, but I am not prepared to um, purchase that. And I will remind um, um, Ms. Malanga that the discussion wherein um, the council was approached to purchase the 12 acres was contingent upon a dismissal of a complaint that was filed by Mr. Malanga. And in order to have that complaint dismissed by Mr. Malanga, we were requested to purchase that property. At that time, I objected to purchase that property under those circumstances. Um, Mr. Kerkoviac, you, you've made a lot of questions. I'm gonna ask um, Mr. Tranke if he's on to answer some of your questions, but just to be very clear, when the mayor was on the last time, um, he did specify that we are not purchasing our own properties. They are on the list of the area in need of redevelopment properties, but we are not purchasing properties that we already own. Um, I think I did address your concern about taking the last, last um, council meeting when you addressed the concern about removing $365,000 off of the tax roll. Whether or not that's a concern to the council, obviously it is a concern to the council. It's one of the reasons why I did not um, take your guidance in urging me to vote no on the Rock Spring because that would have removed $600,000 from the rosters, um, the tax rolls that I'm not, I wasn't prepared to do. Obviously, at this point, 300, 365,000, and I'm just repeating what you said. I'm not sure if that's what it is, um, is not going to be off of the rolls, the tax revenue rolls, um, indefinitely. That is something that as we begin um, the process of planning the downtown West Orange redevelopment area, we will have conversations at that time for. Um, with respect to the Barton Press and what they paid for, what they owe now, I can't speak to that. Um, that's not what was negotiated. Um, I think, I don't know if, if uh, Mr. Tranke were on when he was speaking and asking questions. Those were the few notes that I took of his questions. Um, I think he asked with respect to the settlement agreement that there is uh, it's, it is listed as subject for further uh, revisions. So his question was with respect to that. Can you address that?
Sure. Thank you very much, Council President. Um, specifically, um, obviously, um, the settlement agreement has been uh, subject to a few revisions that I believe the um, municipal clerk posted early this morning. Uh, they are consistent specifically with what the mayor put uh, before the council two weeks ago. Um, and they were just fine tuning changes. Um, I tried to look as Mr. Kerkoviac was speaking, I only see a reference to exhibits A and B. Uh, obviously, he's free to call me on my cell phone, which he has. A is the list of properties, and Council President is absolutely correct. We're not purchasing our own properties. And exhibit B is the restrictive covenant uh, that would go into effect at the closing after we remove the existing restricted covenant. The only other uh, point that was uh, for lack of a better word, misstated uh, by Ms. Kerkoviac is there's a reference to $300,000 plus. Again, what's important about understanding that is the paragraph right before it where Prism is giving up all rights to an escrow in excess of $750,000, which they had a uh, claim to as a result of uh, certain obligations. And Mr. Gross can speak to that more. So, so again, basically, the settlement was that, that basically half of that would be paid back uh, would be split. They had an argument. Their position was they were entitled to all of it. It was an escrow specifically set up uh, for that purpose uh, that we continue to hold and uh, whatnot. So again, at the end of the day, we're acquiring these properties for 12 and a half million. Uh, as the mayor indicated in the last council meeting, we uh, the draft value, val, valuations we had, which were not finalized, were approximately $8 million, which as Mr. Kerkoviac said, is consistent with the current assessment. As Mr. Kerkoviac pointed out, they paid far in excess of that. They paid real estate taxes for literally the last um, Mr. Gross can say number of years, but I'm gonna say four, five, six years. Uh, and this is a settlement. This is a settlement of what uh, I, the judge specifically said could have cost each side over a million dollars each in legal fees and probably taken us three to five years to resolve. As a result of this settlement, uh, the governing body, the town, uh, and the Township Council will be able to take the leadership role uh, in the next step of redeveloping uh, downtown West Orange, uh, which will hopefully complement um, the existing building that is up and running and, and very successful and beautiful uh, with uh, uses that are consistent with that. And certainly that is uh, certainly the, the administration's uh, goal in working with the council and the public. So, uh, so I think that addresses most of the points that Mr. Kerkoviac tried to make.
I did also want to, and Mr. Tranke, correct me if I'm wrong, and this may be just be um, something that I misunderstood um, Mr. Kerkoviac to say. I didn't write fast enough to write um, everything he was saying, but with respect to the council discussing anything further on, um, now that we have this settlement agreement before us, I still am reluctant simply because there is a date by which um, Prism has to notify the township and the court um, with respect to the um, restrictive covenants.
Yes, absolutely.
Should that change? Okay, thank you. And that's what I was gonna say. Should that change? I am not comfortable having those discussions in advance of that date because then we are right back to um, litigating this matter and risking all the work that has been done to get to this point. Um, is, is not worth a discussion right now. So if you can speak to that, um, if I'm wrong, please correct me.
No, you're absolutely right. October 8th, which is a week from Friday, which is one of the reasons we want to get all this done, and part of the latest draft that I'm hoping to have during this meeting will be that they will dismiss the lawsuit, hopefully as soon as tomorrow, against the other parties other than West Orange immediately. Uh, but the short answer is, Council President is right. If by October 8th, they somehow tell us that they're not able to uh, remove the deed restriction that uh, exists, then the bottom line of the story is uh, we're back and we, we want to preserve all of our rights uh, as to all issues, and, and, and so does, and so does Prism, and that's not unusual in any complicated settlement agreement. Uh, but that is a condition subsequent that we'll have to address when and if. And again, certainly the township is moving forward in good faith. We believe that Prism is doing exactly the same thing, moving forward in good faith to allow us to um, turn the corner on, on this matter. Uh, so you're right, Council President.
Thank you. And I just want to be very clear. I want to just stress because I know how things are, that we may express things and then they're misstated and misquoted um, in, in the general arena. Um, why then the settlement? Because this is what the judge um, thought was in the best interest and, and we all agreed um, in finding a resolution to this matter so that we do not continue to expend any more money in litigation. Um, I have heard some, um, I, I can't even say, call it anything other than ridiculous nonsense with respect to that the lawsuit being orchestrated. I, I can tell you, and, and some of my council colleagues who, who have been part of those conversations can also tell you that that is far from the truth. We wanted this settlement to happen, which is why there were negotiations. Um, and um, at this point, the judge did say, let's work towards a settlement. We agreed on a settlement under the condition that by that date, October 8th, they notify both the township in writing and the judge. So that's why this is before us today. Um, I, I'm not going to spend any more time on that, but I just want to be very clear that there, you know, should those um, restrictive covenants not be lifted by that date, then we're right back in litigation. And um, as Councilman Kerkoviac, former Councilman Kerkoviac um, knows well, matters that are in litigation, um, we don't discuss in public because who lit, who litigates um, their matters in public unless they want to hand over their defenses to the opposition? Um, I will say no more about that. Um, I know um, Mr. Tobin, you requested that the I know um, Mr. Tobin, you requested that the township um, make an effort to purchase whatever forests are available and steeps that, that, that um, have steep slopes and for the um, steep slope ordinance to be adhered to. Um, I, I, I don't have an answer for that because um, I don't know how many steep slope forests we have in town. Um, I think that that would be on a case-by-case basis as, as it has been with Crestmont. Um, you know, once again, I will be very clear that that was the imminent threat, as was Rock Spring, um, of a developer actually develop, purchasing and developing that property. Um, Rock Spring, I'm sorry, Mount Pleasant is not that um, in that place right now. Um, if uh, the council, my colleagues will indulge me, since Councilwoman Williams is always last, I'd like to give her the opportunity to um, follow me in this uh, space. So, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you so much, Council President. Also, um, thank you, um, everyone, the, the public, the township of West Orange, my council colleagues, Mr. Fagan, um, for acknowledging my wedding anniversary. Um, as you all know, and if you don't know, Mom, I very much appreciate my husband. He is the wind beneath my wings, extremely supportive. And it is my personal privilege uh, to honor and salute our union on this day. So, thank you. Uh, Mr. Fagan, Mr. Pagliisi, thank you so much for always sharing updates on the township and the county. Uh, we appreciate all of that information. And no, you are not uh, preceding any fall announcements with leaf collection um, as I do have leaves falling already in my backyard. Uh, Mr. Krupovjak and all of uh, those who came um, on the uh, council public comment tonight, thank you so much for taking the time out to voice your concerns. Um, we truly appreciate um, sharing, your sharing. Um, this is how we move things forward in our community. And as Council President has often um, stated, uh, it, it is because of the opposition, no voices in the community that we're able to move forward for the good of the community. Um, I do not take for granted the opportunity to sit behind uh, this table, these seats and, and make judgments and decisions for the community. It is quite a privilege and um, we all want to acknowledge um, when we are in agreement as well as when we disagree. So, thank you. Um, Ms. Lyndsay, Ms. Ruden, um, as, as well as uh, Mr. Tobia, um, totally understood in an agreement with the environmental concerns and the Ridge Road Forest. However, um, I have certainly indicated um, that, that the, the forest has not had an interested uh, developer um, of late. And again, um, the price tag was doubled and a half um, when it was relisted um, not too long ago. And um, albeit that we are in a tremendous uh, real estate market, um, I, I, I don't think we have anyone knocking down the door of uh, the real estate company to purchase that property. So for now, um, we are somewhat safe, not to suggest that your concerns are not valid, um, just that we want to be prudent with how we uh, spend the funds of, of our township. Um, I think that's all the commentary that I have. If I can just continue to indulge and take a moment just to remind the public that on Sunday, um, we have our West Orange Stop Suicide Advocacy Coalition uh, 5K run for Zach. Um, it's three point two miles through the beautiful gorgeous Rock Spring Golf Course, um, as well as the residential area off of Walker Road. Um, come and join residents in West Orange and beyond as we celebrate and acknowledge Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. Um, we know that we can work together to erase the stigma and prevent suicide. So if you have not registered, registration is still open. Um, that will be Sunday at four P M. Uh, the Rent Leveling Board uh, will meet on October seventh.
Councilwoman Williams, I'm so sorry. Can I just ask that we respond to public comment? And um, during new business, we'll go over council liaisons?
Absolutely, totally.
Thank you so much.
Yep, so that would, that would complete my response to, to comments. I think that covered everything.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Catalina. You're on mute.
Sorry, I was expecting uh, Councilwoman Rutherford to go next. Um, thank you, Councilwoman, and, and happy, again, happy anniversary, Councilwoman Williams and her husband. Uh, so. You know, we, we did receive many, oh, many um, emails for the Mount Pleasant Forest. And um, where I didn't get a chance to respond to any of them because I was, we all been pretty much having computer issues since we switched over the new system. Um. Again, this goes back not to, you know, rehash what my colleagues just mentioned. Um, but this area has not been in a threat of development. There's a few challenges there. Uh, a large developer isn't going to come in. Uh, they've tried. Um, there's bedrock um, on, on that property. Uh, many parts of it is already protected uh, by the steep slope ordinance. So there's, there's challenges there, not to mention it's on a private road. Where the township to purchase that property, we would had to have taken in the consideration of the uh, maintenance of that road. Um, we, there's also a uh, historic um, uh, building on that property, a carriage house that uh, was asked for us to renovate for quite a large sum of money, more than the three hundred and seventy-seven thousand um, that um, you know, the uh, Prism transaction uh, is qua- costing us. Um, but you know, there was other financial obligations that the township would have been responsible for. And again, um, if it was in threat of development, of course, we would, you know, roll up our sleeves and try to figure all that out. Um, that's just not the case. Crestmont had a purchaser uh, in a hot market, and we were able to move forward with that transaction. And um, and I'm glad we, we did. So again, um, you know, we have to take these transactions as they come to us, one by one, uh, and weigh the pros and cons of the situation. So I appreciate the advocates for coming out, um, continue to do so. But right, right now, that's where we're at with, with that property. And um, I guess that's it. I'm not, you know, again, we talk about confidentiality when it comes to negotiating. Um, yeah, Mr. Trank, thank you for speaking earlier and Council President for your comments. But um, you know, this is a situation, and I look forward to it turning uh, into a positive situation, which I think it will. And hopefully, um, we will have a purchaser and move forward uh, with um, improving our downtown. So um, and when we do, we will have the details and make a, a detailed presentation when we can. But until then, when negotiations go on, those are confidential matters, just to remind the public. Uh, Mr. Pagliisi, thank the county once again. I sent many residents up to Kmart for assistance with the flooding for FEMA. I'm so glad um, the county executive had arranged that for our residents, especially with this, you know, this past storm. And um, I guess that's it. Mr. Fagan, thank you for your uh, comments and reminders. Uh, and I look forward to my liaison announcements later on. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, uh, once again, uh, to my colleagues for indulging. Um, just responding to the public comments at this time. We'll do council liaisons a little bit later. Councilman Rutherford.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Um, I won't belabor uh, the points that have already been made. I do uh, thank all of the residents for responding, as well as Mr. Fagan and Mr. Pagliisi. Uh, I am in support of uh, preserving the Mount Pleasant Forest. I do think um, it is worth um, preserving. I think we've got to be deliberate in how we move forward. And uh, I've had some conversations with Ms. Malanga and others in the administration about creative ways to do it. Um, but as my colleagues have already expressed, we are not um, under any pressure at this moment. Um, and we have also taken on quite a bit um, in preserving Crestmont as well as in moving forward with downtown. So uh, I do think we have to be deliberate and prudent. Um, uh, acknowledging our responsibility to climate change and protecting the neighborhoods below the forest, at the same time being fiscally responsible. Um, Mr. Krupovjak had uh, several questions regarding the settlement agreement. I just want to uh, state publicly why I have not responded to that email. I think it's important in matters like um, the downtown, the issues around downtown, uh, that we speak with one voice. We have uh, uh, lawyers, attorneys, and uh, uh, we have an opposition on uh, with regard to the lawsuit. Um, and anything that we say um, that um, either whether we misspeak or we speak too much, or we don't speak enough, or we speak unclearly, can be detrimental to us in these proceedings. That's my perspective. I've not been uh, asked not to speak in that regard. That is based on my personal experience. Um, when you have an adversarial relationship, you don't want to give the other side ammunition. Um, and so I'm certainly not going to do that. Um, now, I do have access, as Mr. Krupovjak knows, to uh, because he's a former councilman. I do have access to some additional information that I've not shared because I don't know what or when to share it, and I'm not going to share it. Uh, I hope people don't take offense to that. But it is very important that we not step on our own feet. I don't want us to get in our own way dealing with an adversary in this regard. So I'm not going to say things uh, if I'm not certain uh, that it is absolutely appropriate. Um, if I'm not exactly sure that it is accurate, uh, because I don't want to muddy the waters or make a, a bad situation worse. Um, but I do believe your questions deserve an answer, and I believe you'll get those answers, I hope sooner rather than later. Um. Okay, now, that's it for my public comment, but I do need to say one other thing. Uh. Councilwoman Williams is not the only one who celebrated a, an anniversary. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge my wife of twenty-one years. Uh, we celebrated our anniversary last week. Uh, that's why you guys had radio silence from me all week because I was focused on her and I had a single second of it. So uh, shout out to my beautiful wife, Torka, for putting up with me for now almost thirty years, twenty-one of those married. Thank you, Council President.
Congratulations. Congratulations uh, to you and your beautiful wife. Um, Councilwoman McCarthy.
Thank you. Congratulations, colleagues, on your anniversaries. I wanted to thank you, start with thanking Joe Fagan for announcing the upcoming flag raising ceremonies because we continue to recognize the many nationalities here in our township. Uh, I appreciate that. Um. And Council President, I wanted to thank you and Mr. Trank for answering questions through your explanation of the settlement agreement. Um, for Joe Krakoviak's questions, um, answering questions that were raised. Um, but I did want to add one other detail that, uh, about affordable housing. The affordable housing component was in our newly adopted film services overlay zone. So that will be part of the plan moving forward. Um. And you know, this topic with uh, Mount Pleasant and the forest, uh, I feel the same way. I don't feel the same sense of urgency at the ninety-four acres on Crestmont. There was a conceptual plan that was presented publicly, and that's how it was all brought to our attention. It never did reach the planning or zoning board. Um, so I don't have the same sense of urgency here. And with climate change, if purchasing this pri- and it was just mentioned that it hasn't been touched in one hundred years, but with climate change, if purchasing this property would protect our residents from flooding or landslides or that mudslide that we see, it's still being remediated now on Northfield Avenue at the apartments there, I would agree that this is absolutely necessary. But I don't see the urgency. Purchasing the property is not going to prevent any type of storm damage um, at this, at this time. Um, and just more details, they always have uh, details. The Ten Ridge Road property, that's approximately five acres. They are currently paying twenty thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars for that site. Um, in the many emails that Councilwoman Catalina, we are inundated with emails on this. We are not able to respond, and I do apologize for that because I would like to. If they come from an advocacy group, so we're not, we don't have the residents' actual emails to respond. Um, and in the emails, they're all saying that the tax is inconsequential. At this time, I don't believe it's inconsequential that Ten Ridge Road is assessed at four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. To Ridge Road, which is six point nine acres, the taxes there are twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars, and that assessment is currently at five hundred and twenty-four thousand. So I don't think any of that is inconsequential at this time. And as, as I said, if the purchase of that would prevent anything with regard to climate change and the devastating storms that we've had, um, I, that would be the urgency. But I don't, um, purchasing is not going to prevent that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Councilwoman McCartney. And once again, to my council colleagues for indulging um, our liaison uh, reports until later, till later time. Um, Madam Clerk?
Here I am.
Hi, work. We're, okay.
I'm here, I'm here, so sorry.
That's okay.
I am here. Um, okay, so consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting minutes of September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one?
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Consent.
Okay. Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening, Council President?
Yes, um, I, I see your hand, um, Councilwoman uh, Catalina. And I know um, Councilman Rutherford may have one. Um, I, I want to pull um, item A, one seventy dash twenty-one, please. Um, and that, that is the only one I want to pull. Councilwoman Catalina?
So that was the one I wanted pulled.
Okay.
Um, and also, I just have some questions. Is Mr. Lepore on this evening?
No.
He's, he's not going to be here tonight, but we'll try and answer your questions.
Okay, okay. Just when, when the time comes, I have a couple of questions on some of the, the resolutions.
Okay, thank you. Um, is that, is that it for you? Okay, Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. I'm not to pull, but just a question. Resolution two fifty-four dash twenty-one, authorizing the submission of an application for the Department of Transportation's safe routes to school? I don't have the application. I see the resolution. But can you tell me what school we are uh, applying these, would be applying this to?
I do not know the answers to what schools. I believe this is not just a single school, though. It, it is looking at areas around our schools. Um, but I, I, I'll, I will get you the full details.
I'd appreciate it. Usually, it's, it's concentrating on a specific.
Yeah.
School. And I didn't see that in the resolution, but in general, if we have a study that's going to be done?
At, at a million dollars, I would think it's going to be more than one area, but I'll.
Right, good. Thank you. Nothing else, Council President?
Thank you, um, Councilman Rutherford.
I, I have questions on two forty-five twenty-one. Um, I'm not pulling it to vote no, but I do have some questions.
Okay, and um, if we don't have anything else to pull, then we can go ahead um, with questions. Councilwoman Catalina, if you had questions?
Uh, yes, so missed, I guess Mr. Gross shall handle. Um, two fifty-seven dash twenty-one. So I see we're moving forward um, with an improvement of remedial investigation of firehouse number four?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to just get um, a quick overview, I, I, I guess, from Mr. Lepore. Maybe we could wait till next time to see how we're doing with all of these fire station improvements. We haven't gotten an update recently.
Yeah, we, we, we could, we're, we're going to be um, providing you an update because we're going to be doing a cap, uh, bringing a capital ordinance before you over the next um, thirty days. So uh, we will give you a full, but I can tell you that a lot of the work is done and, and is proceeding right a, as, as we speak in the primary of, or in the, the administrative side, as well as. In the administrative side, as well as the fireside in that firehouse. The administrative firehouse. So I think, you know, you'll be pleased with the progress when we put it all together.
Okay, great. And then. 255-21, that's, is that Mellon Avenue? What we're doing on Mellon Avenue?
Yes. Yes.
And those are the township properties that you're subdividing?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Very good. All right, I just wanted to double check it. Thank you.
You need to do that in order to move forward with the sale.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Rutherford, you had questions? You're muted, Councilman.
Sorry, thank you. Trying to. Thank Council President. I'm trying to understand the scope of what we're asking Matrix to do. So I apologize if this is. Some basic stuff that you guys already understand, but I don't understand it. So I would like to. I'd like to understand why in. Services, page two.
I'm sorry, Councilman, just for the public, what's the resolution number?
Oh, sorry, 245-21.
Okay, thank you.
And it is. To do the Phase One environmental. For the downtown redevelopment site. There are nine, I believe, nine lots. I could be wrong. There are multiple lots that are going to be covered under this agreement. Matrix New World is going to do. The Phase One, and it says that the proposal does not include cost to conduct sampling. It seems to me, and maybe I'm not reading this right, that what they're doing is. Is aggregating data that's already in the public sphere somewhere and then. Supplementing that with some firsthand interviews with property owners or occupants. But we're not actually testing the soil. Am I reading that right?
Yes, you're absolutely correct. That is what you've accurately defined what a Phase One is. And that is what you do in a Phase One. You aggregate, you articulated perfectly, so I'm not going to try to articulate it. That's what you do. And then if anything comes up in those surveys and that analysis that suggests that there are. Anything that needs further review, then obviously we'll have that in a report and we'll make that determination. We just did this with Crestmont. In fact, Mr. Gengaro and I, Mr. Lepore, have had two lengthy conference calls. And again, the good news about, we'll call it downtown, is when these properties were acquired. Environmental was done, as you saw in the settlement agreement and are aware, there is already a 300, I believe, $16,000 escrow. With the DEP. So specifically, Councilman, one of the things we're asking Matrix to look at is. Whether that escrow will be sufficient to cover the work that's already been identified. Sometimes it's a monitoring, well, it could be a host of things. That's part of what Matrix will tell us. And we've asked them to kind of give us a cost estimate, so we know what we're stepping into. But clearly, part of the settlement agreement, as you're aware, is that. We are taking the properties as is where it is, and therefore, any future. Environmental issues that may exist, we want to know about before we, you know, close title and pay the consideration.
No, I completely agree with that. And it just seems interesting to me that. We know that there's already some issues there, but we're not going to test the soil.
Well, because presumably the soil, what we will find in the public record is the soil has already been tested. And the good news is, we know there's been no active operations, whether it's on Barton Press, whether it's on any Ashland. So it's not, it's not like you have an ongoing corporate activity that you have to worry it got worse. But, but again, we've asked. Matrix to fast track this, so that we'll certainly know by the end of October. And obviously, you know, we'll make that information available as soon as we know it, and we'll have to evaluate the next step. But from every indication we have. On that, we don't know of any known remedial, ongoing efforts other than that DEP escrow.
All right, so the second question I have is with regard to a licensed site remediation professional. Says that this is, I'm on page four, the bottom of page four, last paragraph. Please note the Phase One assessments will be prepared for due diligence purposes and will not be conducted under the direction, under the direction. Of a licensed site remediation professional. And it goes on to say some additional things. I, can you help me understand? If we're, yeah, you see where I'm going with this?
Yeah, so an LSRP was, I don't mean this in any other way, but was a kind of a. Position of DEP, many, many people, and there are, as you know, many environmental issues throughout New Jersey. The DEP was just inundated, and they couldn't get out to start inspecting and following up on every cleanup. So part of what they did is they licensed, that's why it's called Licensed Site Plan Remedial Experts. So Matrix has those people, as do most environmental companies. But you don't get those people involved usually until there's an active remediation. And so that's why it's not necessary under the law. And again, Mr. Lepore, I'm sorry, he's not on this call, but. Mr. Lepore is literally gets noticed on every environmental issue in the town and looks at them. So this is, you know, kind of the standard way it goes. You get all, like, you articulated perfectly before. You gather all the information, you see what the reports are, you go out, you interview. Obviously, the people at Matrix are experienced in identifying any site issues. And then their job is to give us back a report that identifies, just like, again, they did this with Crestmont. And we're now working on that T-box that you're aware of, whether we're going to do a subdivision, because I may not. The township may recommend, and we have the right under our agreement, Crestmont, not to take that T-box. Because I don't know that we want to long-term inherit the pesticide issue that may exist or may exist in the future as a result of spraying activities. So similarly here, there's been a ton of work that's been done downtown, including in our own DPW site, let's not forget that. And Matrix, with regard to these properties we're acquiring from. From Prism, is going to ensure that we understand that issue. And again, if and when we discover an issue, you know, it is conditioned subsequent. In the settlement agreement, just like Council President was identifying that deed restriction. Well, this is also critical, that we have a right to do these environmental, which is why we need to do them quickly. And if we were to find something that we felt was financially untenable or whatnot. We would then evaluate and obviously in conjunction with you as to whether or not we wanted to proceed or not. So that's why we're doing this.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, here's my comment to that. It seems a little duplicative if this has. Been done in the relatively recent past, there's been no new activity on the site that should cause. An alarm to then go through this process again and not take it a step further to actually, you know. We know that there is some issue there, otherwise they wouldn't have, you know, 300,000 or so. Set aside to help with the remediation. You know, to do that same work again and not take it a step further seems, you know, duplicatious to me. Is it, am I not?
Well, it, as I think probably Councilwoman Castellino or Councilwoman Williams, it's like title insurance. Every time there's a transaction, even though it might have transferred within the last six months, the old environmental work. We could not use as a basis for determining, and it would not apply to us. There's no privity. So literally, you.
I see.
Yeah, so that's why you do a new environmental study, even though the first thing, as the real estate experts on the council say. First thing you do is you always ask for the old title, but you can't rely on it, because if they screwed up, you can't use that to, for lack of a better word, sue someone. So, so, so again, you're right, we want to take this incrementally. We don't want to make a mountain out of a hole, because I agree with you. I think the issues in this Carter have been, have been well-vetted, and there's no active. Operations occurring. Having said that, we can't rely on somebody else's Phase One. As we determine whether to do, but once you're in the chain of title. It's like Pottery Barn. You bought it, you broke it, you own it, and we do not want to. Go sight unseen. So. But that, I think, I see Councilwoman Castellino unmuted, so she may have a.
Yeah, and I'm good with that. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Trank.
Insurance purposes, too. You won't get insured.
And, okay, I did just have a question probably from Mr. Gross, and I'm sorry, it's been, the last week has been just. Hellish, coming back from Trenton and jumping on meetings, so I did not have time to email you this in advance. So obviously, you can respond to me later. But Resolution 253, it's more housekeeping, authorizing the cost of mailing for electronic tax sale. I just wondered. Because the whereas does speak to. In an effort to more fairly assign greater fiscal responsibility to delinquent taxpayers, while I typically would agree. I'm not sure if these delinquent tax. Payers are the result of any. You know, if they're residential or. Businesses that have been impacted negatively by the pandemic at all.
This is a resolution that authorizes us to do the advertising and basically through the fee. Offset the cost of the advertising on the taxpayers that are delinquent. So it is, in essence, a pass-through. It's not necessarily always 100% equal, but it certainly covers the advertising and the cost of running the sale.
Do we, do you have off the top of your head just a guesstimation of how many delinquent properties? We have currently?
I, I, I do not.
Again, apologies. I just expect you to know it all.
I don't have a count. I can tell you that generally. It was running about normal.
Okay. Yeah, good. That was the only question I had with respect to that. And if there are any, any other items with respect to. The settlement agreement that my colleagues had any questions on, wanted clarification on. I know that there were some drafts, some redlining that were done, and thank you to Mr. Trank. For being really, really. Detailed in reviewing what they've presented and going back and making the adjustments that has been made. Are there any questions or discussion on the settlement agreement itself?
Well, I do have a couple of late redlining that, in fact, while we were just talking, I got a call from Prism's lawyer. That I do want to clarify for the council before you vote on this formally.
Thank you.
So, so they, and we actually did have a Zoom conference with the judge at 2 o'clock today because I was concerned about. Some of the edits I had seen. So, so basically. As you saw, we are, the deed restriction is being, what's called a restrictive covenant, which is a deed restriction, is being eliminated at the closing. And in its stead. We are replacing it with what's on page. Five. However. I. Caught that, again, as the council president and the mayor and Mr. Gross knows, and Chief Abbott. We literally read into the record what the new restriction was going to be. And it did not include certain items at the end of that paragraph.
Paragrasy.
Exactly, on page five. And I spoke to Prism's lawyer. I said, this is a non-starter. We specifically talked about. How we will not restrict in this area. Not that we have any intention to do it, but that we will not restrict cannabis, drug or cannabis paraphernalia, gambling. Guns or weapons, abortion clinics, or methadone clinics. Again, they are not permitted in his own now. So, and they are not part of the fourth amended plan that you approved at the last meeting. But a deed restriction is forever, as we discussed with the judge today. And I don't know how that will evolve over the next year. Now, they, they did agree to remove those items specifically because they were not part of what was put on the record on September 8. They did also agree, they did also then ask with regard to the properties on page six. So again, the properties that were acquired for Prism are titled in the name of Prism or one of their affiliates. The properties on the top of page six. And again, I'm referring, and I'm not sure if everybody has the same version. So this is a version I emailed to the municipal clerk at around 6 o'clock tonight. These are the additional properties that are on Ashland Avenue that are subject to potential acquisition. In order for some of the potential future developments. So what the compromise that I said I would present tonight would be there now willing to agree. That whether it's the deed restriction or whether it's zoning, we agree that for 20, they will agree it'll expire in 25 years. So to me, that's better than forever. Meaning it's a lot shorter than forever. And since there is no intention, certainly by the actions and deeds of the administration and the council. To have outdoor storage, auto repair, body shops, junkyards, waste or refuse facilities. Other industrial usage, including bus parking, truck depots, gasoline stations, manufacturing. Facilities, commercial warehouse and logistics, lumber yards. Again, or any kind of pornography or massage parlors. Those items would be restricted for the next 25 years on, we'll call it. Ashland Avenue and the corner of Lakeside. And the reason from the Prism position, which again. Which, which is that, you know, they put a first-class apartment building there, and this is literally. I think it may even be formally considered the front entrance. So we're talking about the properties that directly about that. So the other important aspect of the change. Which we are recommending be considered if the council will approve this tonight. Is that they will agree to, there will be no further changes in this document. That it will be executed tomorrow in exchange, that they will then immediately dismiss as to the other parties without prejudice. And those parties have been well-identified in the record. As not the township, not the mayor, not Mr. Gross, all of which are ready, well-enabled to, you know, preserve our rights and whatnot. But we think these other parties that have nothing to do with this case. They will be dismissed immediately without prejudice, and then at the closing, they will be dismissed with prejudice. And we obviously believe that that's not only appropriate, but is in the best interest of the township. In order to try to move forward with potential next steps. So. That. So what I would consider the only significant change is that we're basically going to agree not to rezone. That what I'll call property on Ashland that, besides the one we're acquiring from Prism. But the other ones on that, but we're trading that for 25-year cap. And we are getting all the other parties dismissed tomorrow. And then we're dismissed with prejudice at the closing. So.
I have a question, Mr. Trank, with respect to that. And I don't have a problem with changing. You know, the restrictions. We discussed that with the judge as well at that time. It's not in the township's interest either or desire to have any of those. You know, it's what, what, what we have wanted to do for so long anyway. So I'm okay with that. My question is with respect to the dismissal. With prejudice, and then at settlement, a dismissal without prejudice. As you know, I was very concerned that unfortunately, the other outside of who you named, the township and the mayor and Mr. Gross. The others were named, and my concern in not dismissing and simply settling is that while settlement doesn't assign blame or guilt. They should have not been. Named in the first place. I think it was detrimental to those parties involved and unfairly so. What? So dismissing with prejudice obviously means that they can refile or re.
It's the opposite way, Council. So dismissing without prejudice means that they can try. So it goes back to your scenario. If on September 8, I'm sorry, October 8, they don't agree that they're going to be able to deliver. If on September 8, I'm sorry, October 8, they don't agree that they're going to be able to deliver the deed restriction. So they want to restart this up. We have all of our rights remedies and defenses and we will pursue it vigorously as they know. They then would have to ask the court to bring those folks in. And of course, we would vigorously oppose it. They all have lawyers. And presumably, I know they have already indicated they will vigorously oppose it. But keep in mind, that's October 8 under my scenario. But, and of course, if that happens, we're back to grounds, you know, square one. But your point, the, the point that's the most important point, since we believe everybody's moving in good faith to get this done, at the closing, we're not delivering one penny. Mr. Gross will not push the button and allow one penny to be paid without the litigation being dismissed with prejudice forever with regard to all parties. And, and then, you know, it's, it's history. So.
All right. I, I probably wrote, jotted that down wrong, but I'm, I'm happy, I'm satisfied with that. Thank you. And Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand up.
Yes, I just wanted, Mr. Trinket, if you don't mind. I agree, we don't need any of these uses that are listed in paragraph C, which is on my page five, but can you just read that out? I got lost in your explanation. Can you read it as it's going to appear?
Sure. So we are agreeing that with regard to both the properties that we are acquiring from Prism, as well as I'll call it that block. It's, it's basically Ashland from Lakeside to what I'll call the edge of phase one. You know, that goes down Ashland and it's got a couple of properties on Lakeside. So we're agreeing that for 25 years, basically, whether through zoning or deed restriction, it's a combination, there will not be in those sites, outdoor storage, auto repair, or body shops usage, junkyards, or other waste or refuse facilities, specifically Public Works won't be there. Other industrial usages, including but not limited to bus parking, truck depots, cross-stalk facilities, gasoline stations, manufacturing facilities, commercial warehousing, logistics facility, lumber yard, pornography, or massage parlors. Those are the items that we will agree will not be in that block.
Which is specific to Ashland. So it's, it's, and, and certainly understand the needs, the, the, their request for it since that does face the entrance of their, of their building. Any other questions from my council colleagues on the settlement agreements? Okay, I see no questions. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Council President, you pulled Resolution 170-21, Resolution awarding a contract for the providing of recreational services, social services, and activities to the residents of West Orange for the period of January 1, 2021 to December 31, 2021, in the amount of $40,000 for the community house.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I pulled this because this is now the third time, if I'm not losing count, that we have this before council and yet have no financial documentation as has been requested. Not only has been requested, but is required under the, the present agreement. I am no longer in a position where I am willing to continue to put this off. I don't want to sound flippant or seem inconsiderate or show any lack of patience. However, it's, it's required. So I, I'm not understanding why the lack of compliance. So I pulled it because I am, I'm no longer going to, I'm going to vote against this because there should, to me, there is no explanation as to why there is no compliance. There's lack of compliance in this. And for the public, like we do for PAL and Mountain Top League, there is some subsidies that are provided by, some funds that are provided by the township so that they can continue to service our community. And the requirement is that there are financial documentation, some reporting that has to be done annually. And we have not received that from the community house. The request is, what has usually been paid out is $40,000. We have to be able to understand where and how those funds are being used. And we can't do that without having any, anything provided by the community house. So at this point, I'm not willing to put it aside. I, I pulled it to vote against it. I don't know if anybody else would like to speak to that. I saw Councilwoman McCartney and then Councilwoman Catalina.
I don't know what the background is here and I, it has been three times. I do know that it is a childcare facility. We are under tremendous pressure with COVID and staffing. I'm not ready to not vote on this unless there has been communication. Like I don't know that end of it administratively. Has there been communication with them? Are they giving us any reasons why? I'm more in the classroom right now than I am in my office. So I don't know if they're in the same position that I find myself in. So I'm not ready to dismiss it altogether. I feel like I would like to find out more information from them, reason why it has been so delayed in their response. Or are, are they responding and have they been notified?
I, I do recall Mr. Gross informing us last council meeting that he did reach out specifically and had not checked his email at that time during the meeting, but had reached out before the meeting as well to, to request it. So I know that at least from the administration, there have been efforts that were made. Mr. Gross?
Mr. Keo has been doing the correspondence. I don't think there's been any back and forth. If the council decides to hold one more time, I'll, I'll reach out myself personally. That, that certainly, see if I can get this resolved. I, you know, we, we put it on the agenda and frankly, it's just been popping back up again. I did, I did reach out to Mr. Keo and to do, to make sure, to see whether he had heard anything. He indicated he had, he had not. But I don't know, I don't think there's been any back and forth. So I will, if, again, if, if the council wishes to hold off one more time, I'll personally reach out and see whether there's going to be a response. You know, I don't know what, why there hasn't been so far myself, to be honest with you.
I would appreciate that, Council President, if Mr. Gross could reach out and give us a definitive answer.
I, I'll wait to hear from the rest of our council colleagues and obviously we'll support the majority here. Councilwoman Catalina?
So, um, I, yeah, I, I, I'm ready to vote against this. Yeah, the reports have been given to us in the past and they weren't the full reporting that needs to be provided to us. And, you know, part of this is to see, you know, they're nonprofits. So part of the nonprofits is to see what kind of funding that does come in and whether it warrants the township to help supplement the nonprofit. So, you know, there's hope that we, you know, that OS PAC needs, that I, we, you know, I've been advocating each budget year to try to give a little more money to that benefits a good majority of our residents. And, you know, we, we did a lot of heavy lifting for this nonprofit in regards to help facilitating their new building, which they're able to make fu- funding on. So I'm not sure if that's, you know, I like to see those numbers with income that is now being produced there. And so, yeah, so not to say we can't go back if, if the support's there not to approve this tonight and next meeting to, to, you know, to go back to, to support it. So, but I, I stand with the council president this evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Catalina. Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. The participant, in the, in the resolution, the community house is responsible for providing an annual program summary. PAL did it, Mountain Top did it. It is not a detailed document. It's not required to be completed by an accountant. It, it doesn't have, it's two pages. None of this information, we're, there's no way to even verify. This is just on the honor system that they provide this information and they've not provided. That's a problem for me. And so, you know, to follow on with what Councilwoman Catalino just said, they're a nonprofit. They are required as a nonprofit to provide certain data to the state and to the federal government. This is nowhere near that level of information. And they are receiving support to provide a service, which we are grateful for and certainly do use. My child has gone to the community house in the past. But we, we need to know if they require that support. And at this point, to not provide even this basic information, year, name of organization, registered, 501(c)(3) registration number, insurance carry, contact people, assets, if you have any real property, and amounts in a checking or savings account, any other investments they may have, how they register their people, to not provide that basic information, to me is a problem, a red flag. And I, I don't think we should, we should delay this any longer. I think we should take it to a vote and my vote would be no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. If there are no other comments or questions from my council colleagues, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Okay, is there a motion to approve 170-21? Is there a second? There can always be a second and then you can vote it down.
I'll second it.
Councilwoman Catalina?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
You're muted, Councilwoman.
I, I'm gonna vote yes, simply because I, I don't have enough information. Although I am in complete agreement that they have not done their due diligence in supplying just basic information to the administration and to us as elected officials. I would ask that we be just a little bit more generous in giving them time, as has been indicated. Staffing, it has been overwhelming. And right now, we're making a decision based on not understanding completely their circumstances. It's easier for us to just delay one additional council meeting and give them an opportunity to respond instead of just saying no and having to revisit and reopen the same motion again. So I'm gonna vote yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
No.
Okay, the motion failed. Okay. Ordinances on second and final reading, 2659-21, An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Chapter 7 Traffic, subsection 7-19, Through Street, and subsection 7-21.2, Multway Stops Near Schools, Playgrounds, and Youth Recreational Facilities of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Catalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this specific ordinance? Please raise your hands.
And there are no hands raised.
Thank you. Do my council colleagues have any comments, questions on this ordinance? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2659-21?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Catalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
2660-21, Bond Ordinance Providing for the Acquisition of Real Property Commonly Known as Block 174 Lot 1 From the Crestmont Country Club in the Township of West Orange, Appropriating $4,700,000 from the Open Space Trust Fund Therefore, and Authorizing the Issuance of $4,476,000 Bonds or Notes of the Township to Finance Part of the Cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Catalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this ordinance? Please raise your hand.
And again, just a reminder, it's the raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen or call-in residence. It is star nine. And there are no hands raised.
Thank you. I, I just want to, before we take a vote on, on this ordinance, want to first and foremost thank my colleagues for their care and concern about our climate, our environment. This was a heavy ask in addition to everything else that we're doing, but obviously very important to Councilman Rutherford. Thank you for your efforts in helping as a liaison to these negotiations to get us to where we are, to our legal department, as well as to our county executive, which I should have and failed to, simply because time escaped me. I did not have the time to reach out to our county executive, Joe DiVincenzo, to thank him and our commissioners, county commissioners, for their contributions of $750,000 from the SS County Open Space Commission to help us fund the purchase of this 90, is it 94 acres of open space? That, that is commendable. 94 acres to be preserved. That's really, I want, I want to take pause for a moment and just, you know, thank everyone for all of their efforts in making sure that we got here. So to my colleagues and everyone else, thank you very much. And to, to the residents who advocated, your organizing was, was grand. So thank you. If my council colleagues, I see Councilwoman Catalina's hand is up.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Yeah, Judo on everything and Councilman Rutherford and our, our legal department. But I also want to give a shout out to the club itself because of their concern to preserve Crestmont Country Club. They wanted to keep the club going through hard times. And I'm glad they were able to work with the township on this transaction. And, and, and that, I think that's great, you know, partnership with one of our all-time, or old-time organizations here in the township. I think I've shared when I, when I was a young child, I, my, I grew up on Eagle Rock Avenue for a few years. We lived there. And that property was, was right behind our home at the time. And I still have memories of going out in the toboggan, I'm gonna date myself, through, through, and, and in that golf course. So to be able to preserve this property and to continue the, the club's legacy is really a, a, a great win for our community. So thank, thank you to everyone involved.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. I think this transaction speaks to the heart of West Orange. We are a green community. These hills are just gorgeous and this just preserves a huge parcel of it. So I'm excited for the transaction. I want to thank my colleagues for trusting me to be the liaison. It was my first time acting in that role and I learned a lot. I'm looking forward to learning more as we go. But this was a win for West Orange and I'm grateful for everybody that had a hand in it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Okay, is there a motion to approve 2660-21?
Some move.
Second.
Give it the bill.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, 2658-21, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 14.5 and establishing Chapter 2, Section 14.9 of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange, appointment of police department officers and personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes. Um, is the chief on this evening?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, um, I did want him to speak to the, um, ordinance, but I guess he, this is just introduction, so he can do it on during the second, um, reading. Um, Councilwoman Castellino?
So, one question and then, uh, just, uh, a, a statement for my colleagues. So, question is, was there conversations, uh, with the union leadership? I know they wanted to, uh, put a pair of eyes on this and was all that taken care of? That's why we pulled that last meeting?
Um, Mr. Gross, mister, do you have a response to that?
Uh, I, I do know that legal was having some back and forth. I, um, as of a phone call that we had on Monday, uh, legal was satisfied that, uh, everything that, um, we had, that was discussed, uh, was addressed in this current, um, version. I cannot, at this point, tell you whether or not there, uh, what, to what extent the, uh, discussions with the, um, uh, and any members of, of the unions, uh, what, what their views were. That is, that has not been reported to me.
I just wanted to make sure it was vetted, well, vetted through before we move to second reading. Okay, and, and then my next, um, I, I mentioned it to chief and I'll just mention it to my colleagues. Um, you know, West Orange High School has, um, career days where the, you know, all of us are, are students went to work, you know, the colleges come in and I have mentioned this uh, to the police department. Not sure if I, I have shared it with Chief Ekio, but I think it'd be a great opportunity to, um, for, for our, you know, our departments to be present um, for our youth, to show them the career path uh, with both our police department and our, our, within our fire departments within serving their own township. So, I, I'm gonna, you know, work on that. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention a- as well, to help with the recruitment and, and hiring as well.
Thank you, um, Councilwoman Castellino. And, and just for, um, to share with my council colleagues, I was just looking for the notebook where I had taken notes of my conversation, which I will share with you, um, with, um, union leadership on this ordinance. Um, first and foremost, there, there is a very specific, um, desire to support the
Yeah.
the intent, let's say the intent of the ordinance. For members of the public, um, and for my council colleagues, the ordinance, um, is something that, um, allows a civil service community, as is our municipality, to be able to hire alternate route members. And alternate route is just that. So, they are, they're individuals who do not, um, go to the police academy. Um, they go through the same training, but they pay for it themselves. When we're a civil service community, depending on that testing, um, you are placed in a, uh, I don't wanna say lineup, right? No pun intended, but, um, you're listed according to, um, your testing. Um, and civil service communities can only hire in that order. Uh, in the space of, of, um, equity and inclusion, um, in the space of social justice, this has been something that has been discussed for many, many years and the legislature finally, um, was able to pass legislation that allowed civil service communities such as ours to recruit and hire from alternate route because that allows us to diversify our police department. Um, this is only specific to the police department because the legislation is specific to the police department. Um, so I am very happy that that is something that we're able to do. It just broadens our pool so that we can be more reflective in our hiring practices, um, in our police department. One of the things that was expressed that was a concern, um, for, for, uh, the union leadership was the fact that one of the things that the state statute now specifies is that, um, families, so let's say there is a supervisor who is a cousin or a brother to someone who is on shift. They will no longer be able to supervise family. Um, that's not a choice that we make. It is part of the state statute. The concern for union leadership was that it would change the working conditions of their members. Um, and that would, that, that would mean that they could not work the same shifts as their supervising brother, sister, cousin, wife, you know, and there are some, um, some, some couples that are, you know, we have a hu- husband and wives on our, on our force, um, siblings, you know, um, in the police department. That was their concern, um, that they shared with me. They are going to and, and probably have already spoken to their, um, legal department for their opinion. Um, because they do expect that their members are not, um, happy with that, uh, with respect to, um, the nepotism policy. They felt that if they have to be subjected to the nepotism policy, this should be statewide. I'm sorry, townwide. Um, and while I don't, I don't disagree with that, um, I think that that, that is something that, you know, again, if we're intentional, intentional, if we're being intentional about diversifying, I, I think that that is something that we have to, uh, implement across the board. Um, but this ordinance speaks to the legislative changes that have been made. So, I understand, um, their concern and they absolutely have a right to grieve it. Um, not passing this ordinance means that we are, um, not being intentional about diversifying our police department. Alternate route is something that, um, you know, exists for, uh, public employees in the policing profession, in the education profession. Um, and I understand their, their, um, concern. Um, and that there's avenues for way to pursue that concern. Um, should they, it should legal, should their legal department, um, give them that opinion. But that's what this ordinance addresses, um, and, and I think it's a good position for our township to be in. I did ask the chief to, um, be here. I'm sure that something came up, but I'm sure he'll be here on second reading to give his perspective. And the chief was very proactive in this regard several months ago when he came to the council with a resolution to send to our legislatures in support of this, this legislation. Um, so I'm happy that he took that proactive approach and, um, legislatures had enough, um, support from local municipalities and, and stakeholders to be able to pass it. But I wanted to share that with you because I did speak to, um, them and that was the concern they, they shared with me about this ordinance. Again, this is first reading. I don't know what'll, um, you know, I, I don't have any recommended changes. Again, this is, the changes are because of the state stat- statute has changed and we can't change that.
Council President?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I, thank you for your explanation. Uh, and I wanted to revisit what, uh, Councilwoman Castellino just mentioned about the West Orange High School. Because they do have their job fairs and the career and technical services program. Uh, it would be an excellent outreach there. And, uh, if you did just see the article where West Orange Police Officer Justin Davis returned to the high school
Yeah.
and picked up his drumsticks and played with the West Orange Marching Band. I thought it was such a good story. So, um, and there are other, I have graduates from my school that are also police officers in town too. So, um, excellent resource.
Thank you. Absolutely agree. Um, thank you. Um, Councilman Rutherford?
Uh, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, uh, offer support to, um, what you just mentioned with regard to a townwide nepotism policy. I think that's a good idea. I know that's, um, probably not what folks are looking forward to, you know, adding to the plate. Um, but I don't think, if, if it's a good idea, uh, in the police department, I think it's a good idea townwide. I just wanted to uh, echo my support there. And also, Justin Davis, outstanding young man. That's the kind of recruiting, I think, just being present in moments like that will encourage others. I don't want us to overlook Essex County College as well.
Oh, yeah.
Thousands of students go through that school every year. And, um, uh, certainly some of them would make excellent police officers in West Orange. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, um, to my colleagues for their, um, comments. Um,
We could say the same for local universities, Heaton Hall, Montclair. We could say the same for the universities in, in neighboring towns.
Yes. Um, okay, Madam Clerk?
Okay, uh, pending matters, new matters, council discussion?
Council liaisons. Oh, um, I, I certainly before, um, we get to the council liaisons, I, I should, um, I just looked at Councilwoman Castellino and I remem- reminded, I was reminded that, um,
Oh, the ordinance, the cannabis.
And, and again, I apologize, um, uh, Madam Clerk, we were going to amend the, um, the, uh, cannabis task force to add two additional members to that task force. Um, so we did have a meeting, we had a first meeting, uh, last night. It was a really great, um, discussion. Um, Mark Moon, our attorney, um, uh, joined us for that discussion and kinda, we just really discussed, uh, what we're going to, what's before us, what we need to change. Um, the discussions, but we also obviously discussed, um, for the good of the order, uh, adding two new members to the, um, to the task force. I know Councilwoman Castellino had, um, a couple of suggestions, um, the chief and, um, uh, fire captain, uh, Dory Yassine, and I believe, um, Jonathan Redwine also, um, had recommendations as to positions for representation from the township. Um, and their, um, recommendation was someone from the health department, I, um, I E., the director, um, I wanted to say Defazio, but it's Fonzino, so sorry, Michael Fonzino. Um, and a representative from the Board of Education or a designee from the representative, uh, from the Board of Education. That was their, um, their recommendation. Councilman, uh, Castellino, I'll let you speak to your recommendations.
Yeah, so I had recommended someone from the, you know, either the council, PTA's apparent. Uh, I'm not opposed to the superintendent having a designee. Uh, I'd like to see someone, uh, from parks, whether it's Mr. Keo, Mr. Johnson. Uh, mainly because we have complaints of, um, and again, it depends what we want this task for to do. If we're just designating who could operate or we also having, gonna have discussions on some issues that may uh, come into play, uh, with the legalization of marijuana uh, now in the, you know, state. So, and we have seen some, uh, issues. I've worked with, uh, you know, had a meeting, um, with the superintendent and the school board on a liaison meeting, uh, asked them to present awareness to the students to have them realize now that to be response, you know, just because this has passed, just to educate everyone uh, that we do have, uh, no smoking ordinances in our parks and on school property. So, again, how we wanna expand this task force? Do we want it just in the role of, you know, where we wanna place these businesses? Or do we wanted to go a little further with awareness and making sure um, people aren't abusing the, the new privilege? And so, that's why I, uh, my suggestions for the two people I wanted, there were some other suggestions. I mean, I put four people additional, uh, I, but again, I'm gonna defer to, uh, my chair, my, my chair, uh, council president, but, um, those were the reasons for my, um, for my, uh, request.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. And I'll just read off of the agenda, um, that I read last night with respect to the purpose of the task force um, for our council colleagues as well as for the members of the public. Um, it's to ensure compliance with the ordinance addressing the cannabis. Um, to include the recent updates from the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission. It is to create a framework for applications to include, um, some sort of a weighted scale or rubric to, um, assess applications. It is to create best practices with respect to licenses permissible by the township ordinance to include odor control systems, water and plate, plant waste, social justice and equity, um, types of cultivations to include hydroponics versus soil versus aeroponics for cultivators, uh, security to include direct panic lines to the police department. Um, also to create green zones, if you will, and I'm, we're not sure, um, Mark Moon is going to look into that to see if it is permissible to create a zone within a zone. Meaning that while this, um, council did approve, um, the recommendations from the planning board with respect to the, uh, business and industry, uh, industrial areas. If there is a way to create a green zone within those, um, business and, um, industrial zones that have been already established. Um, he's going to look into the legality of that as to whether or not we can. Um, it also is going to focus on creating the regulations for community enhancement programs. Uh, by those who will be establishing businesses in our township. We're looking for good, uh, business partners from whoever comes into our township. Um, and it is also to create an annual fee structure because licenses are, uh, given by the state for a year. And there is, um, a renewal fee, um, that we have to discuss. Obviously, depending on the type of business, it'll be done on a, um, sliding scale. So, those are the things that we were tasked with. So, in looking at members to, um, add to the, the, um, to the task force, you know, I think I agree with the Board of Ed or somebody, the superintendent or his designee. Um, because in looking at where to allow these, um, different types of businesses to exist, obviously, we have schools in, in, in our communities, so their, their perspective would be a good perspective. Um, I, I think also, I, I do like the idea of the health director, um, just simply because of, you know, the messaging, the, um, any, anything that, that has to do with consumption. Um, I know the municipal alliance also deals with that, but I also know that, um, Laura Van Dyke, she's amazing. Um, and she does participate with the Essex County, um, task force. I, I also know she's probably overtasked. Um,
Yeah.
She does send me emails and tries to reach out in that regard, but she, she's got, she's well overtaxed. Cause I did know about her. I think she's, she's magnificent for our township. That was an incredible hire, by the way. Um, so in that regard, I thought that, you know, he could take that place that Laura Van Dyke would bring to, um, to the table. So, that discussion we wanted to have with, with you all, um, to come to a consensus. Um, with respect to Bill, I know that there, he has reached out. Um, you know, there are concerns with people smoking in the park, but um, I think that's more of a matter of enforcement, um, as, as opposed to regulation, right? Cause that's what we're, we're really doing here now is creating policies and regulation. Um, unfortunately, uh, smoking, I'm sure has happened in parks long before, um, the legalization of cannabis, uh, took effect. But, and I'm certain that, um, that's something that the chief will have to address. Um, but that's just my perspective. Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. Um, just out of curiosity, I don't have the, uh, ordinance in front of me. Did we put anyone from the zoning board on the task force?
Um, no, but the zoning, because of the new regulations, i- is going to have to sign off on it. So, yeah, that, and, and obviously, so, uh, zoning is, again, overtasked, but zoning will have to sign off. That's one of the new regulations that came out from the, from the, uh, Cannabis Regulatory Commission. So, they are, they do have a hand. So they are, they do have a hand in it.
And I'm clear on that component. Just wondering if with the task force and, and trying to review, we have over 20 different zones, zones in West Orange, and even looking to see if we can create a zone within a zone, just wondering if their expertise might come in handy when we're trying to identify which areas would be most suitable in the community.
So we do have a representative from the zoning board itself. And together, I know I already saw the chief send out some requests for some maps and things so that they can work on the zoning. But I think that she, that some, that the zoning office itself is already overtasked. And we do have representation from the zoning board. So I think that we, we've covered that aspect.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so just looking to have perspective from, you know, Councilwoman McCartney, I see your hand went up.
Well, I just wanted to bring to your attention and to the public that the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission is holding a statewide informational webinar on October 13th at 7 o'clock. It is a Zoom. If you go to nj.gov/cannabis, the topics are these new CRC initial rules, social equity provisions, preparing for your applications, contact, contract protections, what to expect with a cannabis business neighbor, and what happens next. So I think it sounds, really does sound very informational for all of us to understand. Because just the way this whole process started, you know, we were out there on our own, made these decisions, and then regulations came afterwards. So it just sounds very, very informative. And I think increasing the task force, I would be okay with that. Adding additional members that you are getting this perspective. I think it would be very important to have someone from zoning there. I understand that there's a liaison. I feel that our zoning officer was even instrumental in creating the ordinance and may just want to be a part of this to, just so that everyone's not spinning their wheels, to, she would know what to expect during these meetings. I don't know, I think it would be important to have her involved.
And, and again, she will be, she will be invited by, by requirement per the new statute, she will be involved. So just looking for, so when we go back to amend the ordinance, where, where the, where is the council with respect to the two additional voices or positions on, membership on, of the advisory task force?
I could see the Health Department, and I can see the Recreation Department being involved in that. And the Board of Education, you know, a designee.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the Board of Ed, Health Department. I think when we're talking Rec Department, we're really looking at kids. This is adult use. Children are not to use it. You have to be 18 or over. So certainly, to Councilwoman Castellino's point, we should be educating them on, you know, what this stuff means. But they are not to be using it. And I, I don't think, you know, we're, we're not going to allow that, tolerate. I know that's an enforcement issue. But I, I don't think we need the Rec Department to, to weigh in on that. I think that's more of an enforcement issue. That's just my thought. And, and for a point of clarification, isn't Captain Yasin already on the task force?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I was a bit clear there. Is he going to represent the Fire Department now and not the Downtown Alliance or?
I, I, I've, I've.
Downtown Alliance.
Yes, although I am gonna step on toes for double duty, but Downtown Alliance.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
He wouldn't be able to help himself. I think that he would have to chime in, and where, he wears many hats. And I think that he would chime in.
Absolutely.
And just as a point of clarification, legalization is age 21, not 18.
Thank you, Mr. Kizer.
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, be clear. First of all, I don't know enough about the state statute to really speak on this in detail. But my understanding is that this committee, the task force, is a, is an advisory task force. It can't take any final action. Any final action is gonna be taken by the council. And so frankly, any task force, no matter who the membership is, can always go to other people for advice and, and include them, whether they're members of the, of the task force or not. And one would hope that's how this is gonna work. And, and you don't have to add a whole lot of people to get input from a lot of other people. And beyond that, I'm gonna leave it, you know, and I know Mark Moon has a lot more experience with, with the statute than I do. He's been trying to stay up on it and so forth. So I'm sure he'll provide good advice. But I don't think you have to worry so much about including everybody under the sun. The bigger the, the task force gets, in some respects, it may take away from its ability to communicate with each other. You know, they all say that more than seven members is not a great thing on, on any committee. So you'd need to think about that, too.
It really is challenging just to get a date on the calendar with due to polls that have 10 different options because everyone is so busy. So I, I do understand that sentiment as well. But.
So, so, so I'm gonna, so here's what I'll, I'll do, Council President. I will, we had a great working group last night, I felt. I will step back, but if any concerns come up, I, I would like to invite them into a meeting.
Of course. And, and just so that everyone, everyone knows that, we did advertise that, we, we had two members of the public join us. But absolutely, we're trying to, and I think the, the hope is that once we pace ourselves with all of the different, because it is, I'm sure Councilwoman Castellino can attest to the amount of work that has to be done. We're going to give ourselves a focus, a monthly focus, to get these things done. Because it's just a lot of reading, a lot of understanding, a lot of learning. But my hope is to eventually, when we come to a consensus of what it is that we want to recommend to the council, that we have, you know, a, a meeting to include, you know, everyone's voices to, to participate, to share out in a draft form before it is, you know, presented to the council, what we're doing.
And I, I see Mr. Gross's hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see him.
No?
No, he doesn't have his hand raised.
Oh, I did, oh, okay, sorry.
Say, I wasn't trying to ignore you, Mr. Gross.
Sorry. But Council President, and, and just again, my, my reasoning for this is because we have, you know, it's come to my attention, it's come to Mr. Keo's attention, you know, I've had a talk with the chief. You know, there, we have to get awareness out there that we don't have smoking in our parks, at schools, when there's of games. You know, people have to be mindful. Unfortunately, and I was in the parking lot of Woolbrook Mall a couple of weeks ago, and I'm getting in my car, and there's, you know, two kids there, you know, having a grand old time right in the parking lot. So this is, you know, it's just all about awareness and whatnot. But I, I, if I feel that we need to bring a speaker into the task force, then I would like to be able to do so.
Absolutely. And, and one of the other things that, just to, so that the council is just giving a heads up about, the chief, and I, I, I think it's an excellent idea. He thought that, you know, bringing in a consultant, you know, at a nominal fee. And Councilwoman Castellino immediately said, well, that annual fee can pay that consultant fee. So I certainly appreciate that. But it would be good to have someone that can join us on our meetings. And in addition to Mark Moon, who's also, like us, learning all of this, but someone who, who's been working in the industry for a number of years to give us some guidance in, you know, what we're doing here. But I, I think it was a great group. We met Mr. Abdul Moore for the first time yesterday, who's the mayor's appointee, very excited to have him join. And it's, yeah, it's gonna be quite the learning experience and, and quite the task to have you left. But I'm really grateful for all of the people who are on there getting ready to do the work. Reading 160 pages. Sorry. Okay, council liaisons. That was my, that's, that was my liaison, council liaison, by the way. So, Councilwoman Castellino.
So the Mayor's 5K Run, sponsored by the Downtown Alliance, is Sunday, October 10th. We had to move the date out because of the storm and the cleanup. So it, there's volunteer signup link on the downtown website. Go to downtownwo.com. You could also sign up for the race. There's a kids' run. We've been doing really well with, with people signing up for ads and whatnot. So keep on, uh, keep on signing up. But we do need more runners, so, or walkers. So just, you know, whatever you prefer to do. But it's also for the kids as well. So please come down on, on Sunday, 10th, right in front of Town Hall. Also, in, you know, we had a great presentation earlier about information and awareness. So if you go to wosignup.com, you can sign up for the town pages and the downtown pages. I think the chamber's on there also, just to get information. Again, it's wosignup.com. And this way, would you get the newsletters emailed to you? You can go to Facebook pages and, and like the pages. I think that's it. Yeah, Mr. Fagan had promoted, we have the flag raisings. Councilwoman McCartney and I had attended last week's Unico meeting, first one since the pandemic. So it was great to see everyone in the, in the club. And we look forward to the October 7th flag raising for Italian Heritage Month. Let's see, what else we have here? That's it for now. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. I'll start with the West Orange Arts Council. They are going to have an upcoming exhibit called Pieces: Message in Street Art, beginning on October 16th through November 28th at the West Orange Arts Gift Shop and Gallery Center, which is located at 551 Valley Road. Face covering, social distancing is required. Please visit www westorangearts.org for all the other workshops and creative writing classes and so many other things that they're getting involved in. And just today, went to the county to see if we have been awarded a grant through Essex County. So we look forward to that. Planning Board will meet next meeting, October 6th, Wednesday, October 6th, at 7:30, it will be Zoom. Westorange.org to, for Zoom instructions. West Orange Environmental Commission, we meet tomorrow evening, September 29th at 7 o'clock. Also, Zoom instructions are listed on West Orange homepage, westorange.org. The Friends of Thomas Edison National State Park, you know, our task is to raise funds for things on our national, at our national park. And we are having a cocktail reception for the Black Mariah. If you recall, a few months back, we had Donald Payne come out to, to share with him the need that the Black Mariah, the repairs and restoration. So our cocktail reception, please save the date, May 15th, 2022. It will be at the site under the tent, near the Black Mariah. And just today, I received a word from our grant writer that I had been working with the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board and the West Orange Arts Council to submit the Bloomberg Asphalt Art Grant around the high school. We unfortunately didn't, were not awarded that grant. I was told in the note that there were over 200 applicants nationwide. Right, so unfortunate. We'll try, we'll try again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Open Space Rec Committee is meeting on Wednesday, October 6th. For all of those that are concerned about preserving open space and climate change, this is the committee for you. So please come. You can find details for that meeting and all of our meetings on the westorange.org website. There's a calendar there. The Mayor's Program for the Uniquely Gifted is having a theme party. I believe it is October 20th. Not 100% sure.
19. 19.
There are two dates. Yeah, there are two dates. The actual flyer that has the payment and registration information says October 20th. So please double check your date. It could be the 19th as well. But it's at the West Orange Toby Katz Center. So for those that are interested, I hope to see you there. That'll do it for me. But are we doing the, is this the time to address the recycling thing?
I'm doing business, but I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Williams to do her liaisons, and then we'll do new business. Councilwoman Williams. And, and before you start, Councilwoman Williams, I just wanted to acknowledge your work at the bench dedication at the high school, senior court. That was really pretty amazing to experience with, with everyone who attended. I, I wanna make sure that, you know, I acknowledge that moment because it was really special. It was, it's, it's difficult because I knew Zach, you know, friend of, of my daughters and, but it was really nice that he has a presence there forever. It's not just a memory, but something that, you know, is, is there permanently. So that was really, really beautiful. Thank you for organizing that.
Thank you, Council President, for acknowledging that. And I don't know if you were able to see the pictures that our PIO, Mr. Fagan, put into the tap at least. But on the photo that he took, where it was just of Zach before it had been revealed, the bench had been revealed, there's just like this rainbow element across the photo. And it's just extremely magical. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, so at the culmination of Suicide Prevention Month, which is, you know, an awareness, which is this September, you know, it, it's been quite fulfilling to bring awareness and recognition to something that is often a very difficult conversation for all those who have been impacted or touched by the loss of a loved one. So just make sure we keep that in mind, be willing to have those conversations. As much as we are concerned about our physical health, let's always continue to remember, not just in the month of September, but all year long, that all of us can be impacted by our emotional health and that it is okay to not be okay. So thank you. Just wanted to, again, bring awareness to our upcoming events, which Rent Leveling Board is the first Thursday evening in October. That information can be found on our township website, which is westorange.org. And again, looking for my notes and can't find those. We have the Rent a House that meets on the second Monday. And then I think that's all I have. Looking forward to seeing everyone at the Run for Zach on Sunday at Rock Spring at 4:00 p.m. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Okay, so this is the portion for new business. Any discussions? I know Councilman Rutherford, you had indicated that you wanted to have a discussion. Where's yours?
Thank you, Council President. Several, we've received email and phone call. I'm sure you've gotten them as well, some text messages regarding spotty pickup, recycling. We've had a brief conversation about it. I have not yet had a chance to speak with DPW. I just wanted to address some of the concerns that have been addressed to me. We are aware that there are some challenges. There's some staffing issues there, and we are looking into it. I've had some conversations with my colleagues about, you know, how, what is the appropriate way for DPW to assist if, if that is needed? And so we will look at that. I see Mr. Gross making some faces, so you may be able to weigh in on that. But yeah, I, I do think it's important, you know, we're still in COVID. There are challenges everywhere. When you go to almost any business, you'll see they're hiring, they have staffing shortages. You know, there are some issues with regard to getting enough people to do the work. So we'll certainly chip in and, and we'll do it in a way that makes sense for West Orange. But just bear with us as we're still dealing with a global pandemic. That was my comment.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. And I think when you and I discussed it, and I know we, yes, we've gotten the emails of concerns about why is DPW doing the work of, you know, a vendor? And for intents and purposes, if DPW was not doing it, then we'd get the complaints that. And for intents and purposes, if DPW was not doing it, then we'd get the complaints that, you know, their garbage wasn't picked up. It's just a matter of pitching in. And so then the follow-up to that would be, well, are we, or are, are there's an expectation of some sort of reimbursement? My fear is not the reimbursement. My fear is that because we've been in a pandemic, our tipping um, fees are going to be exponential because we've been home for so long. And Amazon shopping, I, I think, you know, I mean, it, it, our waste has just increased. So I, I, I'm trying to manage expectations and, and Mr. Gross, I wanted to jump in here, but that, that's my fear. My fear is not, you know, why is DPW jumping in when we're paying a vendor and we should adjust the vendor's bill? But we're going to be looking at some hefty tipping fees, I think. Mr.
All of those boxes are recyclable. So all of those Amazon boxes, they're all recyclable. So that offsets that tipping fee.
Um, I'm sorry. And Mr. Uh, Mr. Gross, before you, I, I just wanted to call Mr. Kizer.
Yeah, Council President, I, I mean, Mr. Gross and I have had pretty extensive, extensive conversations about this issue. Um, I've been made aware of it, you know, from members of the public and so forth. Um, clearly this is a pandemic-based problem. Um, it's universal. It's, and I've talked to um, our environmental consultant about it. I mean, this is not just a, a, a county problem, a municipal problem, a state problem. It's national, it's an international problem. Um, and it's going to be difficult to resolve. I know Mr. Gross is, is working on it, going to be working on it. Um, don't know how it's going to be resolved. And, and I think everybody needs to be a little bit patient. Just to be clear though, uh, we, we have not been picking up anybody's garbage. Um, only, only suburban can do that because they have license to do it. So we have been on occasion picking up recyclables, which we can do. Um, and, and the contract has plenty of provisions regarding all of this and, and, but we just have to work through it. Um, and everybody's got to realize that it's, it is pandemic caused. It's not, you know, it, nobody's really at fault here. Um, there's, this is an act of God and, and it, it exists and, and we have to deal with it. And everybody's got to deal with it.
Thank you, Mr. Kizer. Agreed. Um, Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand went back up.
Uh, if, uh, yes, thank you, Council President. If it is a labor shortage issue, please let me know. People reach out to me all the time looking for employment opportunities. So if it's a labor issue, I can help. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah, this question's for Mr. Gross. So do we, do we still have CARES FEMA money that we could fall to? If we are extending public works or that we could bill out for or?
Okay, um, just the answer, that specific question, there's no CARES money that would, we would be able to use for this. Having said that, um, I just want to go back to a couple of things that were said. Number one, everybody's concerns are absolutely valid. Um, the public and as well as a, a, across the board, everybody. Um, having said that, it's the administration's responsibility to make sure that uh, we protect the health, welfare and safety of, of our residents. And our ability to pick up not just garbage, but recycling as well, does impact the health, welfare and safety. So we're absolutely within our rights to address any type of, of uh, situation where uh, a vendor can't perform, whether justifiable or not. Uh, we, we have to make sure that we're protecting the interests and the health, welfare and safety of our residents. Uh, we have done that where as necessary, uh, and uh, without getting into the specifics of it. Uh, we keep track of everything we do. Uh, we keep track of the economics. And our contract with that, with, with suburban, uh, anticipa, has numerous uh, anticipations of what to do on, under these circumstances from the time, if, if uh, they're, they're completely, if so, not them, if, if a cut, if someone in a contract like ours, if they were completely negligent, we can go in and we can hit them very, very hard. If they just can't perform for some reason that's outside of their control, we can still recoup our direct costs uh, for, for uh, what um, we do. Uh, or, or for what they don't do, we can do a deduct. So uh, we're not, we're not financially um, in, in jeopardy here. Uh, where our costs will, will, will be able to be recouped. We've had conversations. We have a very good relationship with, with the contractor. They understand the circumstances. They've advised us, their problem has been labor problems that uh, remarkably, over the past thirty days or so, has improved dramatically. Um, and for, for whatever reason, they don't think that this is going to continue on. We're going to monitor it. Uh, we're going to do what we need to do, when we need to do it. Uh, and, but we're, we're, we're not going to um, jump the gun either. So it, it's a balancing act um, that we do. And um, you can, can, you know, we, our, our job is to make sure we take care and get this stuff done for our residents and we will continue to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Uh, Councilwoman Castellino, is your hand up again or, okay?
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, just wrote another question for Mr. Gross. Um, totally off the subject, but is, are we doing shredding day in October?
I don't know the date.
Is that scheduled?
Our normal schedule.
I, I want to say October tenth.
Yeah. October tenth. Oh, right after, so right after you come uh, to the mayor's race, you could go uh, go shred your documents after recycling center. Sounds like a fun
From eleven to three, yes.
Perfect. Thank, thank you.
Um, and just a reminder to everyone, early voting starts um, the October twenty-third through October thirty-first. I'm very excited to be able to get that out of way just a couple of days um, before actual election day. So um, the information is on the township website as to the locations of the early voting sites. So please be sure um, to visit those. And it is before ten o'clock and we've come to the end of our agenda. So if there's nothing else.
If I can have the honors of adjourning our meeting on this day.
I think Councilman Rutherford should have a second on that.
I think, yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. And this is to inform you that when I end the meeting, it will end for those both on and off screen and no other business will be conducted. And I just want to say, since this is my last meeting with you guys, I just want to say thank you.
We love you, Lauren.
Lauren. I, I'm still here if you need me, so don't worry. But uh, thank you guys. It's been a while.
Have a great school year.
Thank you very much.
Lauren, oh my god.
Have a good night, everyone. Thanks for ending.
Awesome job, Lauren.
Bye bye.